Welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchise. Please silence all cell phone, electronic devices, and do not approach today's. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do it via email to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, do not approach today's unless you are testifying. Thank you, Chair. We're ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of this Subcommittee. This morning, I'm joined remotely by Councilmember Hanks, and in chambers by Councilmember Shoumen, Salam, Carr, Abreu, Nurse, and Botcher. We are holding today's two hearings, but first, we will vote on a proposal known as 2510 Coney Island Avenue rezoning in Councilmember Vernakov's district. We will then hold a hearing regarding a proposal known as Grace Houses in Councilmember Nurse's district, followed by a second hearing regarding a proposal known as Western Rail Yards Modification and Mapping Action in Councilmember Botcher's district. Starting with the vote on the proposal known as 2510 Coney Island Avenue rezoning, and consists of LUs 267 and 268. This is the proposed residential mixed-use development in Sheepheads, Brooklyn. The development, as modified by applicant, will have approximately 27 apartments, of which approximately nine are projected to be affordable. The proposal consists of two actions. The first is a proposed zoning map amendment to change an R4 residential district and a C8-1 commercial district to an R7D residential district with a C2-4 commercial overlay. The second action is a zoning text amendment to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area. We are recommended to modify the proposed zoning districts for the rezoning area to the R6B and the R6D districts with a C2-4 commercial overlay, which are more consistent with the height and built character of buildings along this section of Coney Island Avenue. The entire proposal rezoning area will remain in MIA's designated area. In addition, we are recommended to remove MIH Option 1, so that the 30% of the apartments will have to be affordable to families with a household income of 80% AMI, making them accessible to both low and middle-income families. Counsel, are there any council members with questions or remarks at this time?
No, Chair.
Okay. I would now call for a vote to approve of modification LUs 267 and 268 relating to the 2510 Coney Island Avenue rezoning proposal. Counsel, please call the roll.
Chair Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Abreu?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanks?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Shoumen?
Aye.
Councilmember Salam?
I vote aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
By a vote of six in the affirmative, zero opposing, zero abstentions, LUs 267 and 268 are approved with modifications. These items are now referred to a full land use committee.
I will now open the public hearing on preconsiders LUs relating to the Grace Housing rezoning proposal in Councilmember Nurse's district. This is a proposal to develop a new building with approximately 153 apartments in East New York, Brooklyn. The proposal consists of two actions. The first, a rezoning action to rezone the project area from R5B to an R6A rezoning district; and second, a zoning text amendment to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area. The applicant intends to develop the building under HPD's Extremely Low and Low Income Affordability Program, also known as ELLA, with 100% affordability, but at minimum, the MIH requirements would mandate at least 38 to 54 units to be permanently affordable. For anyone wishing to testify regarding this proposal remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. For anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to submit a speaker's card. If you prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. I will now call the applicant panel for this proposal, which consists of James Howard. Counsel, can you please administer the affirmation?
Could you please turn on your microphone? Thank you. Could you please also raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
Sure, James Howard.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony today in response to Councilmember questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request@landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. I just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you very much. My name is James Howard with JT Realty Advisors. I'm here on behalf of Grace Housing Development Fund Corporation and Grace Baptist Church. They are the co-owners of the sites in question that we would like to have rezoned. Next slide, please. So as previously stated by the committee chair, we're here for two purposes. One is for a zoning map amendment, and one is for a zoning text amendment. The zoning map, we want to change from an R5B with a 1.35 FAR to a R6A with a 3.6 FAR. That will result in our ability to increase the square footage on the respective sites. There are 13 sites currently owned by the Grace Church and HDFC. With those changes, we are looking to build two buildings. One is a seven-story building with 114 units on Vermont Street, and one is a five-story building with 39 units on New Jersey Avenue, above a brand-new church for Grace Baptist Church, along with some community facility. There will also be underground parking, 54 spaces on Vermont Street, and 24 or so spaces, give or take, on New Jersey Avenue. The spaces will be available to the tenants in the building, free of charge. There will be no parking fees or costs for the parking spaces. The affordability, there'll be, we're projecting 153 affordable units of those units. 30% will be at, I'm sorry, 15% will be at or below 30% of AMI, 15% at or below 40% of AMI, 10% at or below 50% of AMI, 40% at or below 60% of AMI, and finally, 20% at or below 90% of AMI. It's expected that this will be financed through HPD's ELLA program with loan accumulating tax credits and tax-exempt bonds to make the project affordable to all. That's essentially the presentation. We want to focus on the affordability, the parking, and going forward, as a result of the various discussions that we've had, starting with our Councilmember Nurse, the Community Board, the Borough President's Office, we've taken into consideration some of the concerns about, A, the unit sizes, and B, the lack of three-bedroom units. So if we could go to slide 14, please. Keep going, please, on the slide. Go back, please, go back. Back. There is a, we, I don't see it there, but, so what we've done was, we've reconfigured the project. We haven't redesigned it yet, but we've reconfigured it to address some of the concerns presented by the Councilmember's Office, the Community Board, and the Borough President's Office. And that would result in an addition of nine three-bedroom apartments. The two-bedroom units would go down to 57 two-bedroom units, 32 one-bedrooms, and 37 studios, for a total of 135 units. The reason that the unit count would change is because we've also decided that we would, we could increase the unit sizes. Originally, the studios were averaging between 300 and 350 square feet. One-bedrooms were roughly 500 to 550 square feet, and the two-bedrooms were under 600 square feet. So we have proposed to change those, to make the studios between 400 and 500 square feet. The one-bedrooms between 650 and 750 square feet. The two-bedrooms between 700 to 800 square feet. And the three-bedrooms would be between 800 and 900 square feet. As a result of those changes, increasing the unit square footages and adding three-bedroom units, it obviously would result in a decrease in the number of units that we could provide. The final numbers would be determined after the architects redesigned the project. With that, I will pause for questions.
Thank you so much. Just a few questions before I toss it to Councilmember Nurse. Can you give me a breakdown on the units one more time, please?
Sure. As far as the unit distribution or affordability?
Unit distribution.
Absolutely. So the current proposal includes 29 studios, 53 5-3 one-bedrooms, 71 two-bedrooms, and no three-bedroom apartments.
How much three?
No, zero three-bedrooms, for a total of 153 units.
Is there a reason why there's no three-bedrooms apartments?
We were trying to maximize the number of affordable units, so that's why the original proposal did not have any three-bedrooms.
If you minimized the studios, would you be able to produce any three-bedrooms?
Yes. So what we've looked at now as-
Affordable three-bedrooms?
Yes, absolutely. 100% affordable under both scenarios. The original with 153 units, and the proposed, which would total 135 units, we would have 37 studios, 32 one-bedrooms, 57 two-bedrooms, and nine three-bedrooms.
Okay. I just want to continue being consistent.
Sure.
I, I'm not a fan of studio apartments. I believe that they're not conducive to communities-
Sure.
-who are trying to grow families, or even have, you know, shared spaces where they can invite loved ones over, so just want to put that on the record, as consistent as I've been.
Sure.
The other two questions I have are, when did the church acquire the residential properties on the block?
I'd say over the last 20 years or so.
20 years, okay.
Yeah, so Grace Baptist Church had developed Grace Houses down the street some time ago as a HUD project. They sold it, and as part of the sale, they had to use the proceeds to further affordable housing development. So they used those proceeds to acquire the vacant lots along Vermont Street, as well as New Jersey Avenue, for future development. So it had always, it had always been contemplated that the church would develop those sites. Given the, the poor condition of the existing church, the church had a need to redevelop their church as well. And, and in an effort to do that, we looked at kind of cross-subsidizing that by also building affordable housing and creating a new church at the base of the New Jersey Avenue residential building.
Is the church going to be the same square foot as the original church, or are they losing spaces?
For the most part, yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I said two questions.
No, 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 no.
Can you just educate the committee on why the church selected a R6A district for this project?
Sure, absolutely. The R6A was done to be consistent with the adjacent East New York rezoning that took place several years ago. In fact, one of the sites that the church owns was, in fact, included right off of Liberty Avenue, but unfortunately, it did not extend down towards, you know, the other end of the block, so-
So this is just to continue the same makeup of the community?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I have no more questions. Councilmember Nurse?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to thank you for accommodating the need for larger family units.
Yes.
Would love to see the final breakdown that you've said out loud to us today in written form-
Sure.
...with the breakdown of the affordability rent, just so we can have it on the record.
Okay.
But I appreciate that you came today with an update. I, I, I agree with the Chair that studios really aren't a solution for our housing crisis, and three-bedrooms is a hill for me to die on, so thank you.
Okay.
And also for making the unit sizes bigger, so if you could also provide in written format the size of the studios, one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms-
Absolutely.
...as you've articulated here today. We've had a couple conversations back and forth, and I just want to get on the record, where are we in terms of coming up with a plan, a transition plan, and an eventual permanent housing plan for the people who already live on that block?
Good question. So as we have recently seen, there are roughly three tenants currently residing on the block within the properties owned by the church, and we've committed to providing them with affordable, long-term housing. Initially, obviously, as those sites are demolished to develop the two new buildings, we would develop it in phases. So if these tenants reside on Vermont Street, if we did the New Jersey Avenue site first, then we could conceivably move them into the new apartments on New Jersey Avenue, and then, you know, redevelop the Vermont Street site. If that's not an option, we would find temporary alternative housing until both sites are redeveloped, and then provide them with an opportunity to move into the new buildings.
Okay. And covering the moving costs-
Absolutely.
...that was made-
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, yeah, so any moving cost, short-term rental cost, would be covered by the development team, yes.
Okay, great. Would love to see that in, in the final-
Sure.
I think those are my main questions. I see that you're, you know, you've accommodated the larger, larger unit sizes as requested by the Community Board, and you've accommodated kind of like a wider range of AMI to somewhat account for mixed, mixed income.
Yes.
So I appreciate that as well. And I really don't have any other questions, given that you've come here with those updates, but I can follow up with you offline.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Nurse. Are there any other council members with questions for this panel? There being no questions for this panel, this panel is excused. Thank you for testifying today. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wants to testify on this project?
There is no one online, but if you signed up in person, could you please see one of the sergeant-at-arms?
This is regarding the LUs relating to the Grace Housing rezoning proposal. If you are in here in person and you sign up to testify, can you please come up to the podium? There being no members of the public who wants to testify on preconsidered LUs relating to the Grace Housing rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed, and items are laid over. Okay. I will now open the public hearing on LUs 283, 284, 285, and 286 related to the Western Rails Yards Modification Proposal in Councilmember Botcher's district. This proposal consists of two alternative scenarios: to develop the western portion of the MTA rail yard located between 11th Avenue and the West Side Highway, and West 30th and West 33rd Street, which is known as the Western Rail Yard. In 2005, the city established the Special Hudson Yard District and rezoned the eastern portion of the rail yards between 10th Avenue and 11th Avenue, and West 30th and West 33rd Streets, known as Eastern Rail Yard. In 2009, the city rezoned the Western Rail Yard, and objective was to create a mixed youth, excuse me, a mixed-use residential area with open spaces that had less density than the eastern portion. The Eastern Rail Yard was developed with a 7 million-square-foot mixed-use development with four towers that were completed in 2019. Despite the 2009 rezoning of the Western Rail Yard, the site has not been developed to date. Applicant is now proposing an updated development proposal for the Western Rail Yard under two scenarios. The first scenario involves building a casino along with commercial and residential buildings. The second scenario is to develop a mix of commercial and residential buildings and would not include a casino. The proposal involves four land use actions. The Western Rail Yard is located in the Special Hudson Yard District. The special district specifies where building can be built above the rail yards and specific design features. The applicant is seeking a special permit to modify these regulations to pursue their updated development scenarios. The second action is a zoning text amendment to broaden the scope of the special permit to achieve the design changes needed to pursue the proposed development scenarios. The third action is to amend the city's map to change the elevation of West 33rd Street, which borders the site to the north. The fourth action is to amend the restrictive decoration associated with the site, and that governs the design and operation of the required publicly accessible open space on the site. Before we discuss this proposal further, I will repeat what I said when we heard a proposal earlier this year to develop a casino in Willits Point, Queens. Neither the actions we heard about Willits Point, nor the actions that we will hear about today, will authorize a casino. In 2002, the state decided to issue up to three gaming facility licenses in the downstate area, which includes the city, and the state is leading the process to decide which proposals are awarded a license. This state-led process consists of three steps that will begin this summer. The first step consists of a review by a community advisory committee, also known as the CAC, followed by the review of the gaming facility location board, and a final decision will be issued by the state gaming commission. A decision by the state is expected by the end of this year. The proposal before us today concerns the design of the proposed buildings, public open space, and street configurations under two different scenarios: one with a casino and one without a casino. Under either scen, excuse me, under either scenario is important for the public to understand that the actions that will be discussed today will not authorize the applicant to actually build a casino. Whether the applicant can build a casino will be decided by the state later this year. I hope this is clear to everyone here today or listening online. For anyone wishing to testify remotely, you must register online by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. For anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeant-at-arms to submit a speaker's card.
Yes.
If you prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. For the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request@landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And I would now like to give the floor to Councilmember Botcher for his opening remarks. And now the applicant team may begin.
Good morning, everyone.
I just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record.
Thank you so much, Chair Riley.
You may begin.
I also wanted to thank Housing Committee Chair Prina Sanchez, who agreed to swap hearing
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jeff Blau. I'm the CEO of Related Companies. Councilmembers, Chairman, thank you very much for your time and thoughtful review
rooms with us today. They had us over at 250 Broadway, and that would have been tight, so happy that we're
of our ULP application for the Western Rail Yard modifications, and we appreciate the
able to be here today to accommodate everybody.
opportunity to speak here today.
Thank you to everyone for joining us for today's hearing on the future of the Western
I'm Jeff Blau. I'm the CEO representing the applicant team. Slide.
Rail Yards. This is not just another land use application.
To start, I want to turn your attention to the photo on this screen. This is the project site between 11th and 12th Avenues from 30th to 33rd Streets, which
This is a decision about one of the most valuable parcels of land in New York City, and therefore, one of the most valuable in the world.
has been a rail yard in this configuration since the 1980s.
The choices that we make here will help shape our neighborhoods, our city, and the lives
There have been various proposals over the years to develop the site, including a stadium for the 2012 Olympics.
of New Yorkers for the next 100 years and beyond.
With the operating train yard below, it is a challenging site to build on logistically,
Because of that, the stakes could not be higher.
but also a rare opportunity with three contiguous blocks in Manhattan.
Our responsibility is clear: to ensure that this extraordinary public asset is maximized
Next slide, please. Our proposal is to transform that empty rail yard into a vibrant, connected part of
for the public good, not for short-term profits, but lasting public benefit.
the community, with a 1,500-room convention hotel, wind resort, as well as 5.6 acres
This is not a decision we take lightly.
of public open space, and now up to 4,000 new housing units, a public school, and a
Today, under Chair Riley's leadership, we will conduct a fair, thorough, and robust
series of other amenities.
hearing. We'll hear from the applicant, from stakeholders, and most importantly, the public, the people
In the process, we will create over 30,000 union construction jobs, and thousands of permanent careers, and deliver on all of the community benefits agreed to in 2009,
who will live with the consequences of what gets built here. The applicant has argued that the 2009 rezoning for this site, a plan shaped by years of
meeting or exceeding prior commitments to open space, affordable housing, community
hard work and negotiation, has not stood the test of time, and that the financing assumptions
spaces, and a location for a public school.
made back then did not materialize as expected and don't pencil out today. We'll be exploring that aspect closely today. We'll be asking, is the current zoning truly unworkable? And if changes are to be made, are the proposed alternatives financially sound, realistic, and truly in the long-term interests of New Yorkers? The fact that the applicant's proposal involves securing a casino license, a license that is by no means guaranteed, makes these questions even more urgent. In a city as diverse and as passionate as ours, you'll never achieve full unanimity. But for a project of this magnitude, there must be credible, substantial buy-in from the community that will live with its impacts. And at the end of the day, this is about making the most of an irreplaceable opportunity: to build the housing we need, the open spaces we deserve, and the resilient, equitable city we aspire to leave for future generations. New Yorkers are proprietary about our city, like, this is our city, and that's true. But in another sense, we are just stewards of this great city. We are here for a relatively short amount of time, and it's our job to care for our city, to cherish it, to pay it forward, and to leave behind a city that is even more wonderful, fairer, and more lasting than what we inherited, something that will stand the test of time. Thank you again to everyone who is here today to share your perspective. Your voices matter. Your voices will be heard. Let's get started.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. Thank you, thank you. I, I love the community that came here today, but we don't usually make noise in here. If you like what's being heard, you say this. If you don't like what's being heard, you say this, all right? Let's try this right now, okay? I like it, I don't like it. All right, we're there. I will now call the applicant panel for this proposal, which consists of Jeff Blau, Andrew Rosen, Elise Wagner, and Patrick Blanchfield. Counsel, can you please administer the affirmation?
Could you please make sure your mics are turned on, raise your right hand, and state your name for the record?
Elise Wagner.
Jeff Blau.
Andrew Rosen.
Patrick Blanchfield.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony today and in response to Councilmember questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for the viewing public. If you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. I just ask you to please re-estate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jeff Blau. I'm the CEO of Related Companies. Councilmembers, Chairman, thank you very much for your time and thoughtful review of our ULP application for the Western rail yard modifications, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak here today. I'm Jeff Blau. I'm the CEO representing the applicant team. Slide. To start, I want to turn your attention to the photo on this screen. This is the project site between 11th and 12th Avenues from 30th to 33rd Streets, which has been a rail yard in this configuration since the 1980s. There have been various proposals over the years to develop the site, including a stadium for the 2012 Olympics. With the operating train yard below, it is a challenging site to build on logistically, but also a rare opportunity with three contiguous blocks in Manhattan. Next slide, please. Our proposal is to transform that empty rail yard into a vibrant, connected part of the community with a 1,500-room convention hotel, wind resort, as well as 5.6 acres of public open space, and now up to 4,000 new housing units, a public school, and a series of other amenities. In the process, we will create over 30,000 union construction jobs and thousands of permanent careers and deliver on all of the community benefits agreed to in 2009, meeting or exceeding prior commitments to open space, affordable housing, community spaces, and a location for a public school. Next slide. Just to spend a minute on why we are here, I want to highlight some of the changes since we first acquired the rights to develop the site over 15 years ago. A platform over the rail tracks is required in order to build on this site, and the cost of that infrastructure has basically doubled to over $2 billion. In addition, when this project was first conceived, the intent was for luxury condominiums to pay a large chunk of the infrastructure costs. Now, the cost to build a condo building on this site is higher than the value of the units in the market, meaning nothing can be built without a change in strategy. For evidence of that, you can look at sale prices for the condos we built across the street at Hudson Yards, which are lower than it would cost with labor and materials to build a new building on this site. Just to reiterate, without a change here, this site will remain an undeveloped rail yard. Next slide, please. While the gaming application is subject to a separate process, this application paves the way for that opportunity by adjusting the configuration of the buildings. Importantly, though, there is an alternative scenario in the plans, which addresses the site planning for the north side of the site in the event a gaming license is not granted for the site. After a productive dialogue, the City Planning Commission agreed it was reasonable to revisit this plan after 16 years and approved the configuration shown here, which keeps the total same density for the site, but reconfigures the site plan from six building sites to three and expands the open space to a cohesive, connected space linking the existing Hudson Yards out to the High Line and Hudson River Park. Next slide, please. Here is a view of what the rail yard can become: a beautiful new open space the size of Bryant Park with lush landscaping and a clear connection between the existing portion of Hudson Yards, Bella Abzug Park, the High Line, and Hudson River Park. One key factor making this all possible is the change to the elevation of 33rd Street. Its transformation into a pedestrian-friendly street activates the site frontage, connects to the High Line, and allows for the elimination of streets that previously were required in the middle of the park. City planning affirmed that removing the interior streets would be an improvement and create a green space that would be an invaluable amenity for the neighborhood with seamless connection points to the High Line. Next slide, please. Here is an image of the park with the High Line in the foreground. Next slide, please. We have been through a lengthy public review process to get here today, with hundreds of meetings with community stakeholders both before and during the formal ULP process, and we've heard some pretty consistent feedback. The community and the city want and need more housing. We heard it from Community Board Four, from the Borough President, from the City Planning Commission, and from elected officials across the city and state. Next slide, please. With that feedback in mind, we have been looking for ways to significantly add to the housing in this project while acknowledging and addressing the immense cost of that platform infrastructure over the rail yards. We identified a path to create up to 4,000 apartments on-site, replacing the office building that we were planning for 30th Street and 11th Avenue with two additional residential towers. To make up for the funding that the office building was contributing to platform costs and payments to the MTA, we are looking to replicate a financing mechanism that has proven successful just across the street, using the project's future incremental taxes to fund a portion of the infrastructure. Next slide, please. This graphic illustrates that plan graphically, transforming property taxes created by this platform into platform infrastructure funding that enables up to 4,000 residential units on the south side of the site. Next slide, please. Specifically, we would revert back to the existing zoning for the site at 30th Street and 11th Avenue, which you can see here in this slide. Next slide, please. Importantly, this plan for additional housing and pilot funding works with or without the gaming resort, and your decision on this application is intended to set up the site for long-term development regardless of the future decision by the state gaming commission and community and the CAC. Next slide, please. Here is a view from 11th Avenue looking west today. Next slide. Here is an image of the new residential building from that same perspective. Note the pedestrian crosswalks and the large open-spaced connection. Next slide. And a view from the newly landscaped West 30th Street looking east, which is an immense upgrade from how the street looks today. Next slide, please. This is what 30th Street looks like from that same angle today. Next slide, please. Flipping to the north side of the site, here's a look at 33rd Street today. The street is actually closed off to through traffic and is being utilized as a police car parking lot. Behind that wall in the background is the northernmost of 30 train tracks. This long blank wall is an impediment to access and the viability of 33rd Street for pedestrians, and we are proposing to lift the elevation of the street up to the top of the wall at the same height as 11th Avenue currently exists. Next slide, please. Here is a diagram showing the transformation of 33rd Street. It would become a two-way street with a turnaround, along with a pedestrian access to the High Line and an additional ramp, elevator, and stair connecting to the lower elevation at 12th Avenue. There would be an access area at this lower elevation for Long Island Railroad vehicles as well as loading into the Javits Center Marshaling Yard property immediately to the north. Next slide, please. And this is what the new 33rd Street would look like once completed. Next slide, please. So, to summarize the land use actions before you today, these actions cover the proposed project aside from the gaming resort, which will be handled in a separate process with the state and CAC. There are no changes to the existing zoning district, allowable uses, or density. There is also no change to our commitment to affordable housing, public school, cultural, and daycare spaces. We are requesting a city map change to adjust the height of 33rd Street, which will remain a mapped DOT city street. We are also requesting a zoning text amendment to expand the applicability of the special permit for the site to enable modifications to ground floor level and open space regulations. Additionally, there is a request for a special permit to authorize these changes to the site plan. And finally, there is a modification to the restrictive declaration filed for the site to incorporate the changes noted above and all the conclusions of our recently completed environmental impact statement. All of the prior developer obligations for the site area would be delivered. Next slide, please. Just to reiterate the opportunity here, approval of a ULP is the only path to develop the Western rail yards. Without these zoning changes, the site will remain undeveloped. The 2009 plan is not financially viable and cannot be built. We need updated zoning approvals to move forward with any development on the Hudson Yards West. The ULP, this ULP, is not about the gaming license. That is a separate state process yet to begin. Next slide, please. The benefits to this project are robust. There are over $2 billion in benefits to the MTA, over 30,000 construction jobs during development, now up to 4,000 units of new housing on-site, including affordable housing, a 5.6-acre green space, a K-8 public school, community facilities, and daycare. Next slide, please. So, the choice is stark. There's an opportunity today to enable 4,000 new apartments, tens of thousands of jobs, large-scale open space, and funding for the MTA, where Hudson Yards West will remain what it is today: a hole in the ground with parking trains. Next slide. Let's finish the yards. Thank you.
Is that the end of the presentation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to ask a few questions, then I'm going to toss it to Councilmember Botcher. Okay. So currently, right now, is there an existing plan for the area that requires more housing that was stated today?
The City Planning Commission approved 1,500 units, and as Mr. Blau said, the proposal, we are proposing to modify that proposal to make it 4,000 units, and we're doing that by removing the commercial building that was proposed for the southeastern portion of the project, and instead there would be two towers with 2,500, up to 2,500 units. And that was essentially the plan that was approved in 2009 for the southeast portion of the project.
What is the affordability level of the affordable housing units, and how would this be regulated?
So there were 1,100 affordable units as part of the original commitment to Hudson Yards. All but 324 have already been completed. Those 324 will be included within the 4,000 units.
Will the proposed housing be a part of the application to the gaming facility location board?
Yes, the housing would be consistent with or without the gaming.
It would still be at 4,000?
Correct.
Which of the four actions requested are nee- oh, excuse me, let me go back to that question. Would the affordability remain the same?
Correct, yes.
Regarding? So the residential component of this proposal is part of the gaming facility location board or is it separate from it?
It is part of the zoning for the site regardless of the gaming onsite or the alternate proposal, which is commercial, so there'd be no change to the location of the 4,000 units in either plan.
Okay. Which of the four actions requested are needed for you to pursue your gaming facility application with the state? And I ask because my understanding is that the current zoning text allows an applicant who is awarded a state casino license to build their proposal. So do you need any of these approvals to actually build a casino if you are awarded a license?
We don't need it to build the casino, but the project as a whole cannot be built without these ULP actions.
That's the housing, the school, all those components?
And including, in particular, 33rd Street.
33rd Street and the park, the public open space.
Okay, and the renovations to MTA as well. Okay. And I believe you said this before, but for the record, how would you proceed should these actions you are requested are not approved?
At the moment, the Western rail yards is not financially viable, so nothing would proceed.
Okay, thank you. Now, give the floor to Councilmember Botcher to start his question.
Thank you, Chair Riley. I want to focus on the 2009 plan for a minute. When did you reach the determination that the 2009 plan was not going to pencil out, that that zoning wouldn't support the construction of a platform?
I'd say over the last five years, post-COVID, post-runup of interest rates, and all the inflationary impacts that have hit the construction industry, and we recognize that the costs of the platform have increased to over $2 billion, and obviously the cost of construction of vertical buildings has also increased dramatically. So if the decision was totally independent of the gaming licenses being proposed by the state.
And when you reached that determination, did you notify the elected officials, the community board, ask to meet with us to discuss the situation?
Well, as you know, we've met with over 100 community groups in this process, including a meeting with the community board, and thankfully you were in attendance there where we did walk through the economics and the viability of the old plan versus the new plan. So yes, we did do that.
I wish we had had that meeting years ago. The 2009 plan, there's a delta between how much revenue that would generate and how much is needed to construct the platform and make it, what's that, like dollar amount?
I'm sorry, could you just restate it maybe?
The 2009 plan doesn't pencil out. When you, on a sheet of paper, you pencil, here's how much revenue the housing alone would generate, and here's how much it would cost to build the platform. What's the delta there? How much would the housing bring in, and how much would it cost to build that platform?
I would say just in general, the housing proposed, the 4,000 units are not able to pay for, absorb the cost of the heavy infrastructure to be built over the platform, and that's what this plan solves for today.
What's the number, the delta there? How much, how short does it fall? Is it like?
It's probably over $3 billion.
So there's like a $3 billion shortfall?
Correct.
With the platform? Can you explain to the public the mechanism that you've come up with in the last few weeks to be able to add housing to the site? You touched on it, but can you help the public understand it better? Because a few weeks ago, throughout the process, you were saying that this couldn't happen without a gaming license. The gaming license is what would make this financially viable. And now you're proposing this payment in lieu of taxes, this pilot that you say will allow most of the housing to get built on this site. Explain what that pilot is and how it would work.
Right. So just to be clear, this zoning change is totally independent of the gaming license and is not dependent upon a gaming license here. So whether it's a gaming resort or a commercial building on the northern end of the site, it is the taxes from those commercial uses, either one, that would be used to essentially offset the infrastructure costs that would be built to build the platform over the rail yards. This is a tried-and-true program that was done with Hudson Yards Development Corporation, HYDC, where the future real estate taxes of the Hudson Yards buildings were bonded and utilized to build the seven train and the park above the seven train. So in fact, this is really, this is just further extension of the HYDC district. It is not a new mechanism at all. So same structure, same process, and same utilization, except in this case, it's for infrastructure over the rail yards as opposed to the number seven subway.
So in the eastern rail yards, this, there was a payment in lieu of taxes where the tax revenue from the commercial buildings was used to finance the seven train, the decking over the eastern rail yards, and that's what you want to do on the western rail yards as well?
Yes, except on the east, it did not, it did not pay for the deck. It just was the seven train and then the park on top of the seven train extension going north from Hudson Yards. But basically, it's the same exact legislation that is currently in place. The district of that legislation is proposed to be extended as part of this.
Seems so obvious and so clear. Why was this not part of your original proposal? Why was this just added recently as a financing option?
So we had a commercial use on the southern end of the site, which, because of the use there and the demand for commercial office space, that building could pay its share of the cost of the infrastructure to build the platform. In meeting with you and community leaders and the community board, we recognized the real desire by the elected officials and the community to increase the count, the unit count of housing. And so when we took away that commercial office building, we had to utilize a different mechanism to replace the capital that would have come from that building to pay for the infrastructure that the housing couldn't otherwise pay for. So it was really in response to the community desires.
And what it would entail to use this pilot? You'd basically be extending the boundaries of the pilot for the eastern rail yards to include the western rail yards, is that right?
Yes, the current boundary is actually broader than the eastern rail yards. It's a whole district, the Hudson Yards district, so that district would be extended. That's correct.
And that would require city council legislation? What other requirements would? What other requirements would that involve?
Yes, it would require a resolution of the city council.
And it's part of this, it is part of this ULP, not a separate application?
Any state action?
No. There would be negotiation of documents with the city, but no state action.
If a, if extending that pilot district to the western rail yards, if it would enable this plan to finance housing, why not use that pilot with the 2009 zoning to help that original plan get constructed?
So the, the 2009 plan does not provide, it has essentially small buildings in the center of the park, breaking up the park, and essentially designed for luxury condominiums as opposed to the larger scale rental building that we're proposing on the southern end of the site. So you would not be able to create the park. You'd not be able to elevate 33rd Street. You couldn't put the gaming application, if that were to be successful, on the northern end of the site. So there are a whole host of changes that are significantly better in this plan and, and respond to the current market demand away from luxury condominiums and towards more rental housing.
I want to talk about the open space. The, the open space in the 2009 plan was designed, painstakingly designed with the community board and other stakeholders over a long period of time. And it involved smaller development sites with green space integrated between the buildings. Why doesn't this plan follow that same general site plan and those public space principles?
So we believe that this plan is a far superior public open space plan with a 5.6 acre contiguous public park, which does have areas separated to create pockets for different uses. Some have playgrounds, some have lawn area, some have benches for sitting or meadows. So it does retain the feel of separate areas, but have the benefit of a contiguous 5.6 acre park that's essentially bigger than, or similar in size to Bryant Park, just to give a sense of the scale here. Something that hasn't been created in, in New York City for decades. We think this is, retains the benefits of the old plan, but is actually far superior.
Friends of the High Line says that the new design creates adverse impact on the user experience of the High Line and the open space through increased wind and shadow impacts. In your view, how does this design interact with the High Line differently than the 2009 plans? And have you worked with the High Line throughout this process? And when did those conversations begin?
So as you know, we've been working with the High Line since the very beginning of this process and have met with them over 10 times until such point as they decided that they no longer wanted to engage with us. This plan interacts with the High Line in a very similar way in terms of connectivity to the High Line. We actually left it up to them as to the locations that they would like to interconnect to the public open space. The public open space at the High Line's edge is similar to what it was before. And now actually with the change to this housing building on the southern end, that essentially is the building that was previously in that location in the 2009 plan. So really no change from the prior. Yes, do buildings create shadows? Yes, we haven't yet figured out the technology to build a building that doesn't create shadows. This plan does not create any more shadows than the previous plan on the High Line.
Why have you been unable to modify your design in a way that would gain the approval of the, of the High Line? They have asks for what, how the buildings should be configured. You haven't been able to change your design that much to accommodate that. Why were you able to only go so far? And why can't you go farther and work with the High Line and come up with a design that fits their needs?
So as, as I mentioned, we did meet with the High Line 10 times. They had four asks of us at that time. We made all four asks to the building, including setting the buildings back further from the High Line, notching certain areas, moving locations of certain buildings. And so we did accommodate all of their asks until they decided to no longer engage with us in, in any way whatsoever, constructive or otherwise. And then they decided that the main reason that they didn't like what we were doing is that they wanted more housing units, to which we responded by now increasing the units from 1,500 to 4,000 housing units. And I find it interesting that the High Line still opposes this, really showing their true colors, that this is really about NIMBY, they don't want anything built here, and that would be a great loss to New York City.
Looking at the numbers, is it true that the open space in this plan is decreased from 63% in the 2009 plan to 46% in this plan?
No, there's no change to the size of the public open space here. I'm not sure where those percentages came from.
The Bryant Park-like space will only see an average of 2.3 hours of sun per day between May and October, the, the peak season for growing vegetation. Is that, is that true?
Patrick?
The EIS disclosed shadow impacts to the High Line. The shadow impacts are primarily from the building in the southwest corner. There are also shadow impacts from the new buildings onto the open space across 11th Avenue in Hudson Yards.
Not, I'm not talking about shadow impacts on the High Line. I'm talking about the shadow impacts on the, the open space that you described it as a Bryant Park-like open space within the Western Rail Yards. Is it true that it'll only see an average of 2.3 hours of sun per day from May to October?
If we, if you want specifics like that, we certainly can provide an answer in writing. But what, as I think was said a few moments ago, the shadow impacts are comparable to the impacts from the 2009 plan. And as Mr. Blaus said, there will all be, always be shadows from buildings. So, but if, we certainly can provide the detailed answers if that would be helpful.
One of the major adverse impacts that was described in the EIS was on traffic. That on four corners and 40 intersections, traffic that can't be mitigated, some intersections would experience seven minutes delays. What factors, what measures do you intend on taking to ease traffic on these eight sidewalks and four corners and 40 intersections?
We, we'd be happy to provide that response in writing. You know, I, I think traffic is similar to shadows. You can't build something, housing or otherwise, without creating traffic. But certainly, we've engaged in a very detailed study and can provide you with whatever numbers would be helpful.
And that the, the switch from commercial to housing will actually decrease that traffic?
A, a casino on this site will likely help with the other commercial ventures in Hudson Yards, like the retail, the, the mall, et cetera. Is that at all a factor in your decision to add this a gaming license application to the rezoning proposal?
Again, this is really not a proposal about the gaming and, and that will be considered in a separate application. I do think there are ancillary benefits to building a resort in this location, but that's not part of this application.
Just going back to the financing for a minute. Just to be clear, if you were awarded a gaming license, would you still seek the pilot, the, the payment in lieu of taxes, the deferment of taxes in order to finance the platform? Or would that no longer be needed?
Yes, it was, it's needed in both versions due to the cross subsidy to the housing. Both the commercial building, that would be the non-gaming alternative for the north, and the gaming resort, if that were to proceed. Those taxes, the, the resort and/or the commercial building would, would be utilized to offset the infrastructure required to build the housing on the south side of the site.
Charter buses? Where do you envision the charter buses dropping off and picking up passengers in your plan?
That's another thing that's specifically addressed in the EIS, and we'd be happy to provide a response in writing.
You must know that answer. Like where, where are you dropping off and picking up people in buses?
And we did look at the, the bus traffic from this site. There wasn't a ton generated based on the EIS assumptions. But we did evaluate that and we had a couple of drop-off points, one off 11th Avenue. And again, there wasn't a significant impact to the traffic.
It is not really the business plan of when to have significant charter bus traffic as part of their business operations.
How many parking spaces are included within your latest iteration?
725.
There's 725 parking spaces included? And is that, who are those parking spaces for?
They are for, primarily for the residential buildings.
How many parking spaces for the proposed casino?
On the north side of the site, in the, in the gaming alternative, we assumed 500 spaces in that building. In the non-gaming alternative, it was 450. And there's additional parking on the, on the south side with the residential.
So you envision most people coming via the train?
Most people coming by public transportation or perhaps by, by taxi. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but that's also in the EIS.
Your latest iteration that includes the pilot and that adds more housing, have you presented this to community board for, prior to today?
We have a briefing scheduled with the, with the community board. This just came up, but we did, we did explain it to them.
When will you be meeting with them?
We haven't set a time yet.
And will you be sitting with the High Line to discuss this latest plan with them?
We are always welcome to meet with the High Line if they're willing to meet with us.
No further questions, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Bautcher. Councilmember Salam, you have any questions for this panel? There being no other questions for this panel, this panel is now excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wants to testify on this project?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So yes, we, we have many members of the public who want to testify, both in person and online. So please, everybody, listen carefully.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
If you have signed up online, could you please make sure that you are logging in into the Zoom account with your first and last name? Currently, a lot of people are just signed up with a first name, so it's important to specify also your last name. Also, in terms of timing, we will hear from elected officials first, then do in-person, and then go to online. The in-person, we have approximately 70 people. So for the people who are online, it'll probably take between two to, at least a good two hours before we can get to you. That's it, Chair.
Thank you, Counsel. For the members of the public here to testify, please note that witnesses will generally be called in panels of four. If you are a member of the public, signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepare to speak when indicated by myself you may begin. Please also note that once all panelists in your group have completed their testimony, if remotely, you will be removed from the meeting as a group and the next group of speakers will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the live stream broadcast of this hearing on the council's website. Members of the public, we'll be given two minutes to speak, and we are stopping at two minutes. When you hear the bell ring, please wrap it up under 10 seconds and we'll be moving to the next person. We will first begin with elected officials. I know we have Assemblymember Jordan Wright online. So Assemblymember, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, members of the committee. My name is Assemblymember Jordan Wright, and I represent Harlem, a couple miles north of the Western Rail Yards. Our city is at a precipice. More and more New Yorkers are having trouble making ends meet. They're having trouble buying groceries, paying for childcare. And the face of eviction is increasingly the middle class. Turmoil and uncertainty in Washington only further threaten to slash away the federal programming that so many of us rely on to make ends meet. As a member of the state legislature working on this year's budget, I know all these challenges all too well. We can't let this stand. What New Yorkers really need is bold action to show that it is still possible for the middle class to build a future here. If we want real change, we need to tap into solutions that harness the power of the private sector to empower the community. Hudson Yards West offers a prime example of this inclusive growth. I'm excited about the prospects for housing, jobs, and community funding. Hudson Yards West will provide 40,000 union jobs with funds allocated to workforce development, programming to ensure our local folks can fill these slots. I'm excited about thousands of new homes and the creative funding model that shows what can happen when public-private partnerships come together to create a real way to add housing at scale, not just at Hudson Yards, but other big projects as well. I'm excited about the community benefits. Whether the Euphoric Casino or not, committing 1% of the gaming revenue to go directly back into the neighborhood will benefit the neighborhood in a truly meaningful way. I imagine over $200 million in the next 10 years to fund infrastructure for a new school, childcare center, and social services program. That's real support for the people who live there. I've appreciated the due diligence and careful consideration given to Hudson Yards West so far during the approval process. The input scrutiny, and the input and scrutiny have strengthened the project, pushing it to be more than just another development. Let's continue to make progress, and I ask that you approve this project so we can keep moving forward as a city. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Assemblymember. There being no questions, the Assemblymember, you're excused. Please go vote on that budget. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, now we are going to transition to in-person hearing. I'm just going to, in-person testimony will be given first with Amber Nikosia, Paul Devlin, Susan Marshall, and Sally Greenspan. And I just want to remind the public, we will be given two minutes to testify. Okay, I'm going to read the names one more time. Oh, that's everyone. Okay, thank you. Thank you. We'll be first begin with Sally Greenspan. Sally, can you just press the button, please?
Hi.
There you go.
Good, okay. So Sally Greenspan, former president of the Council of Chelsea Block Associations. I'm going to have to ad lib what I've prepared to say a little bit based on what I knew and what I know now. So bear with me if I'm repetitive. First, I want to thank Related for revisiting the plan, figuring out financing and improving the housing numbers and making that effort, especially when they've been saying all along it would be impossible to do that. Well, the impossible has happened. They have figured out a financing plan and there's a way to move forward. I could not see the plan up there from where I was sitting, so I'm kind of starting in that direction from where I was before this presentation because I don't know what this new plan really looks like. Related keeps saying up to 4,000 units of housing, and I don't know what that means either. What is the guarantee for Related to meet the commitment? And exactly what will that commitment be? Is it 2,000? Is it 3,500? I don't know what up to 4,000 means. And I think the housing needs to be considered first. We don't want a repeat of some. We don't want a repeat of some other disasters like Barclay Center, where housing was promised and not built the way accordingly it was supposed to be. I'd like to know more about the mix. I know something was mentioned about the number of affordable, but the last number I heard was three hundred and twenty-four. I think Mr. Blau corrected that, but I'm not sure what he said, what percentage would be affordable. I now understand that some of it will be rental. I don't know what the mix is for middle income, for low income, and for luxury, which I realize there will have to be some luxury. And with regard to the casino, I know it's not part of this, but I know it's, it's still being considered, and I don't know how a casino fits in with the residential community. As the president of my own block association and CCBA for a long time, I know that nobody wants to live on a block with the greatest restaurant or nightclub, and certainly not a casino.
Thank you, Sally. Next, we'll hear from Susan Marshall.
Good morning, Chair Riley, Councilmember Botcher, and other members of the subcommittee. I am Susan Marshall, as you've just been told, and I'm the new president of the Council of Chelsea Block Associations. And Sally has already covered some of the concerns that we have as an organization. You know, the number is rather ambiguous. In the press release, it said fifteen hundred units, up to four thousand units. What is the number? And again, what is the ratio of the affordability? That's a major concern. Also, we need housing, 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 housing. So it's nice that they got rid of an office tower. We love that, but we still need more housing. The two thousand nine plan called for five thousand two hundred and seven units. So let's, let's keep housing forefront. I know we're not, in theory, talking about a casino, but I believe part of this application has a zoning that would allow for a casino. That is what we are here to urge you to not vote on. We don't want that zoning to be realized, because then if they do get the license, they will build it. If you build it, they will come. We don't need one-armed bandits taking our residents' lunch money. What happens in Vegas should stay in Vegas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Next, we'll hear from Amber Nikosia.
Good morning, members of the council, and thank you. My name is Amber Nikosia. I'm the president at Penn South. We have about five thousand residents that live in this community. Related presented to our Board of Directors recently, and after that meeting, our Board of Directors came out unanimously against this project. The current landform review procedure, procedure represents a hard-fought compromise, the result of years of collaboration between the community members, city officials, and the developer. This agreement is not a formality. It is there to protect the best interest of everybody who is at the table, who made this decision. What we have before you today is a bait and switch. The developer wants to rezone so that they can build less housing, potentially build a casino next to an elementary school, and they want the taxpayers to have the burden of paying through it, for it, through a pilot. The current zoning, as it stands today, allows for fifty-seven units, fifty-seven hundred units of housing. In a city where we're constantly talking about there being a housing crisis, we cannot allow somebody the opportunity to build less than was originally agreed to. To address the union that's here today that I support, no matter where they build this casino, there are going to be jobs and revenue, but this location already has a future to fulfill a different promise, one with a residential focus. We ask that you vote no to rezoning, to save our new school, our High Line, our streets, our bike paths, and to save our housing instead of reducing it. We've already earned the current zoning compromise through years of study and public review. Please stand with us, as you did in our original fight.
Thank you. Before we go to Paul, the next group that I'm going to call up consists of Keith Forrest, Joseph Rocco, Koby Levy, and Winston Majetti. You will be the next panel. And also, if there is an Andrew Reseji in the chambers, can you please fill out a speaker's card? We don't have a speaker's card for you, so if Andrew's in here, can you please fill out speaker's card? Thank you. Paul, you may begin.
Good morning, Chairman Riley and Councilmember Botcher. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I am Paul Devlin, the co-chair of Health Kitchen Land use from Community Board Four. We wrote a letter in January twenty twenty-five urging a complete denial of this application, driven by the reduction in housing units of fifty-seven hundred units of the two thousand nine plan to the fifteen hundred, now four thousand, housing plans. But the reason we wanted to deny this and work together to find a solution is because of the unmitigated adverse impacts. As you've heard today, we have problems with shadows and transportation. What we did not talk about today was air quality and construction noise. Those unmitigated adverse impacts can be mitigated if we don't move forward with the current plan. I agree with Councilmember Botcher that this is a prime opportunity and a chance for us to do something that builds the city forward, brings us union jobs, brings us housing, brings us all sorts of benefits. And I agree with Councilmember Botcher that this process of this proposal that's brought forward to us three days ago should have started years ago. We have an opportunity to work together to find a solution for this site and to work with the developer. But the fact of the matter is that there is a June deadline for casino application, and a casino will not fit on the current two thousand nine site plan. So they're pushing forward this plan so they can submit the application in June of two thousand twenty-five. If Mr. Blau is correct in saying that this has nothing to do with the casino, then I 'd be happy to withdraw this application today and continue to work with the Community Board, the elected officials, and the community to build a project on this prime land that would work for us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And just to clarify, I think I was asking this before, the original plan had how much housing?
The existing approved two thousand nine site plan could accommodate five thousand seven hundred units.
Okay, thank you. There being no question for this panel, this panel, oh, you have one question? Go ahead, Councilmember Botcher.
I won't ask, I won't ask a ton of questions. It's a long day. Paul, Community Board Four, do you, after all the analysis you've done and the meetings we've had, do you believe that the two thousand nine plan is viable? Or do you, have you, as a board, reached the conclusion that it does need to be modified in some way?
I would say as a board, we have not taken a position one way or the other, because we have not presented enough data to make that conclusion. We did have a meeting with the development team about the housing cost changes between two thousand nine and two thousand twenty-five. We did question some of the forecasts they had made, and whether or not those numbers were conclusionary to say that would not work, but we would not provide further information on that. I would say personally that I recognize that changes between two thousand nine and two twenty, two thousand twenty-five are realistic. Yes, inflation and costs of construction have gone up, so I would agree with that strategy. But that doesn't preclude us from sitting down and having a conversation about those solutions, and that's something that we should have started years ago, not three days ago.
Sure, because one of the, you know, when I met with the applicants, the first thing I said was, you know, before we even talk about what changes are made, you've got to sit with the Community Board and the elected officials and really go through the two thousand nine financing and in great detail, and help folks understand whether or not that needs to be changed. And when we all met, they went through in relatively high detail about why the two thousand nine financing wasn't going to pencil out. The question is, if it does need to change, what are those changes? And so you personally believe that some changes might be in order, but the board hasn't officially taken that position?
Correct. The board has not officially taken a position on that, but we, as a board, have always been proponents of new housing and new development. We are not a board to deny applications for new construction, new homes, new projects. So it would work to the benefit of the development team and to the community to work together to find a solution on this site. We are not saying no outright. We're saying no to this current application, because we don't have enough information to make a better conclusion. We would be happy to work with the developer to find a solution on this, on this site.
Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is excused. Thank you so much for testifying. The next panel will consist of Winston Majetti, Koby Levy, Joseph Rocco, and Keith Forrest. If your name is called, please come up to the panel. The following group will consist of Joe Restucia, Jeff Gardina, Pamela Wolf, and this one's a little challenging to read. Alida Lafarge. That would be the following panel. We'll begin first with Keith Forrest.
Hello, good evening. My name is Keith Forrest. I'm with the Greater Harlem Chamber of Commerce. Great to be, great to be in before you guys. My name is Keith Forrest. I'm honored to speak today on behalf of the Greater Harlem Chamber of Commerce. For more than a century, our mission has been to strengthen economic opportunities for Harlem residents and for Manhattan. The strength comes through smart investment, bold infrastructure, and projects that, that create lasting change. It comes through projects like Hudson Yard West. At times when New York faces a serious housing shortage, rising costs, and, and growing pressures on, on our infrastructure, we need real solutions to move forward. Hudson Yard West would bring up to four thousand new homes, a new public park, a school, and billions in private investment to strengthen the MTA. This plan was shaped, this plan was shaped by feeding, feedback from hundreds of community meetings, and it reflects a real willingness on the part of the developers to listen and to act. It deserves your thoughtful consideration, because this isn't just a development, it's a chance to show that New York is still willing to invest in the people's future. The truth is, what we miss, that when we miss opportunities like this, it's working New York, it's working New York, New Yorkers who paid the highest price. We've seen it before, we can't afford to see it again. Today's vote isn't about a casino, it's about zoning changes needed to unlock these opportunities for New Yorkers. We urge the council to move this project forward and help build a city where working families can stay, succeed, and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Winston.
Good morning. My name is Winston Majetti, and I serve as Executive Director of the Greater Harlem Chamber of Commerce. Originally chartered in eighteen ninety-six, we are the oldest continual business organization in Upper Manhattan. Our mission is to improve the quality of life for all our residents, as well as to develop and attract quality businesses and professional services. Over the course of our hundred and twenty-nine-year history, we've co-sponsored some of the most important key development projects in New York City, including the George Washington and Triborough Bridge construction, New York's first subway line, and the eight, and the nineteen thirty-nine World's Fair. I'm here to speak in support of another historic and transformational project, Hudson Yards West. This is exactly the kind of development that the Greater Harlem Chamber of Commerce is excited to see come to Manhattan. The plan endures neighborhoods, get a stake, workers get a shot through thousands of new jobs, and families get a future. If we want New York to remain a city of opportunity, we have to build like we mean it, and we can't afford to let this project pass us by. I intend on seizing this moment. I sincerely hope the council is equally committed to deliver for hard-working folks by advancing this development. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Koby.
Still morning. Good morning. My name is Koby Levy. I'm a resident of Hudson Yards and a local business owner. I've been to many of these hearings, and one thing is seemingly said over and over again, and that's that we're at the crossroads in our city. And if certain voices have their way, we will have this great celebration for the word no. This is not a city of no, right? We build things here, and presumably, this is something that we want built. I keep hearing about housing over and over again, and then people talk about the two thousand nine plan. But the two thousand nine plan is gone, right? In two thousand nine, there was no Instagram. In two thousand nine, a certain orange man was a game show host. So like, the world has changed. So if the alternative is, we can have this project, jobs, and housing, or we can have nothing, then why aren't we talking about it in that scope? Why are we talking about something that is literally in the past, that is gone? Tariffs, inflation, the world has changed, the economic world has changed. We need to be realistic. This is an opportunity for jobs and for housing, which is supposedly what we all want. I don't think we should miss this opportunity.
Thank you. And last, we hear from Joseph.
Thank you for having me. I'm a small business owner, Jim Shure Repair. We've been in business for ninety-three years on Fifty-Ninth Street, between Park and Madison. Had a relationship with Related Company since the late eighties, and they've been really a great company, and we pride ourselves on customer service and great quality work. And we lasted ninety-three years. The third factor was developers. When I was there fifty years ago, there was only short little two, three-story buildings, and all these developers built around us and kept our business going with more people. And now we are in the Hudson Yards, Fifty Hudson Yards, and we're hoping for the same thing. If they build more buildings and develop more housing, more people, that'll keep our business going, especially when tough times and small businesses are struggling. So, and I know Related will do the right thing, because they've always been right by us, and they are top shelf, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
There being no question for this panel, this panel is excused. Next, we'll hear from Joe Restucia, Jeff Gardana, Pamela Wolf, and Alida Lafarge. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your last name. It's spelled Al, Lafarge, Lafarge. Is that her? No. Lafarge, that's L.A.F.A.R.G.U.E. Somebody's last name. She's not here? Okay, okay. No problem. Okay. We'll begin first with Pamela.
Me?
Yeah. You Pamela? If one of you other guys' name is Pamela, that's fine.
Okay, nobody else here named Pamela. Well, hello.
That's Joe's drag name.
Now I'm going to get totally hung up with my glasses. My name is Pamela Wolf. I live on Twenty-first Street, on West Twenty-first Street. I am the president of Save Chelsea. Save Chelsea advocates for the preservation of community, of our community's historic architecture and neighborhood character. We are not anti-development. We very much want to see the Western Rail Yards developed, but in a way that prioritizes what is important to our community. Save Chelsea is opposed to the proposed plans for the Western Rail Yards and stands by the two thousand and nine community-informed development plan. The High Line is not just a cherished neighborhood park, it is an internationally admired cultural treasure that Chelsea and the City of New York are proud of, a phenomenon that continues to inspire small, similar projects the world over. It has become a centerpiece of our Chelsea character. It should not be degraded by a misplaced casino. A few words about Related's last-minute press release. The developers are asking the city to absorb the financial risk of their casino project. At this time of economic uncertainty, we, the taxpayers, should not be rolling the dice on this development scheme. As best we understand their press release, taxpayers, us, would essentially be fronting billions of dollars for a project with limited public benefit, a casino and ninety-two percent luxury condos. This could not be more different than the original Hudson Yards financing scheme, which largely paid for public infrastructure with direct public benefit, including the expansion of the Number Seven train. We recommend that Related go back to the drawing board with the community and reshape the development plan so that it meets the public interest. Friday's press conference was a far cry from that. Too little, too late. We urge the city council to vote no on this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Jeff.
Hi, good morning. My name is Jeff Gardner. I am the co-president of the West Eighteenth Street Block Association and a longtime resident of Chelsea. First, I'd like to thank Related for presenting a revised plan. Unfortunately, I can't support that plan as that- Unfortunately, I can't support that plan as that does not live up to the spirit of the original 2009 agreement that was crafted with the community. First and foremost, I think that it is simply premature for the council to vote in favor of the proposed zoning because there's not been a meaningful opportunity to engage with the community in an effort to develop something that the community supports. And unlike the characterizations of NIMBYs, I am certainly a NIMBY and would welcome development in my neighborhood that's responsible and supports education and affordable housing for our residents. And I am very reminded of the fable of the scorpion and the frog. And I think that Related has showed us in the past through their use of the EB5 Visa Financing Program that they're again looking for the public to finance a profitable venture on their behalf. So I would welcome an opportunity for Related to come back to the table, get CB4's approval of a proposed project that meets the community's needs, as well as the needs of the entirety of Manhattan. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we hear from Joe, the next panel will consist of Kevin Jones, Frank Clark, Jacob Dixon, and Dale Burnett. Joe, you may begin.
My name is Joe Restucha. I'm a 46-year resident of Hell's Kitchen, Executive Director of Clinton Housing, a not-for-profit housing developer. I've been on the Community Board Four since 1982, and I'm a co-chair of housing. I was directly involved in the 2005 negotiations with Hudson Yards and the City Council and the Related, and 2009 Western rail yards negotiation. Our community board embraces density, major density. And we need a plan, not a press release, three days before a public hearing. The lack of housing production here has been stark. The original plan did not limit the production to condos. Related has taken that as a narrative, saying you can't build condos. And today, noting that they want to produce 4,000 units, of which 324 would be affordable. That's 7% affordability on a major site. It's simply not sufficient. They do simple things like saying, "We're gonna elevate West 33rd Street." It's really to turn it into a cul-de-sac for casino entrance for black cars to, people to get dropped off. Traffic problems will happen in every development. It's a matter of degree. We rarely see environmental impact statements that say, "There can be no mitigation whatsoever of traffic." There can be no mitigation whatsoever of noise. And the open space and calling it constantly Bryant Park, if Bryant Park were surrounded and put in shadow for the entire summer, that is not Bryant Park. It is the quality of the open space. It is not a cohesive, connected space, yes, but it'll be in the dark. And I want to note for the chair, in all my years on the West Side, I have never seen organizations from the entire community board, from 14th Street to 57th Street, coming together to say "no" to something. It doesn't happen. We're very fractious. We disagree about everything on the West Side. And, you know, in 1986 is the last time our community board voted "no" on a development proposal. And that was like a crazy little addition on top of a chocolate factory. We are coming together with one voice, saying "no." Please help us in this to move on to the next phase of this development.
Thank you so much. Councilmember, do you have any questions for this panel?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next, we're here from Jacob Dickinson, Frank Clark, Kevin Jones, and Dale Burnett. And the following group after this will consist of Robert Hammond, Cynthia Stark, Catherine Latery, and Michael Walsh. We're missing someone. Kevin Jones, Frank, Jacob Dickinson, Dale. Jacob Dixon.
That's me.
Dixon. Frank is here. Kevin? Kevin Jones? Do we have a Kevin Jones? Okay. Okay, we'll begin with Dale.
My name is Dale Burnett, Managing Director of Big Equity and affiliate of the Basis Investment Group. I monitor, express my support for the West Side Rail Yards proposal and to spotlight my firm's groundbreaking role. We are a minority-owned, woman-led investment manager, and I believe we'll play a transformational role in this development. Our leadership is comprised of men and women, black, white, and brown people, people who grew up in public housing like our CEO, those that grew up in inner-city neighborhoods here in New York like myself, lifelong New Yorkers, as well as immigrants that came here and achieved the American dream. We all support this project because it's not just about economic development. It's about community building at scale with intentionality and providing community benefits that will ripple across the city. It's not all perfect, but the creation of 30,000 jobs, 5,000 permanent jobs, pathways to long-term careers for New York families, the fact that thousands of affordable housing units have been delivered across the city by Related, and that continues here. I must say, I've been personally impressed to sit alongside Related as they've reconstituted the project to up the number of units to 4,000 in response to the community. Nobody gets 100% of what they want, not the community, not Related. But this shows you what I know, that they are a partner that actually listens. The proposal includes acres of new green open public space in a part of the city that urgently needs it. And Lord knows that the MTA needs those upgrades for people like myself and our team that ride the subways every day. And then there is us. Through our investment in the project, the door will be opened for qualified minorities, women, New Yorkers of all stripes, background, and colors to invest in the project through us, giving people traditionally excluded from major developments the opportunity to build wealth and invest in their own city. What is more important, this is not new. We've done this with Related in other cities. We did this without fanfare. We did it because it was the best thing to do. The project will create an economic engine that does not leave people behind. It's a blueprint for how New York can create economic development rooted in community that drives opportunity and creates benefits that are not perfect but are shared by all. I urge you to support the proposal.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Jacob Dixon.
My name is Jacob Dixon. I'm the owner and operator of Dixon's Farm Stand Meats, the butcher shop and restaurant in Chelsea Market. I've been there for 15 years, and I've also been a West Chelsea resident for 15 years. The pandemic hit hard, and Chelsea is still struggling to come back. Foot traffic is down 30% from pre-pandemic levels, even as city tourism rates have rebounded. Retail storefront vacancies in Chelsea are above average for the city. We need to think big. The Hudson Yards West development would create a singular attraction in New York City stretching from Hudson Yards to the Whitney and Little Island. There would be nothing else like it in the five boroughs. A casino would attract a new and different customer base that would be incremental to our existing foot traffic. Even if only a fraction shopped the local businesses, these are customers we would not otherwise have, and I wouldn't want to see them going to other boroughs. With the expansion of the proposal to 4,000 residential units, investment in community organizations, there's no question this proposal is right for the neighborhood. Big ideas like Chelsea Market, the High Line, and Little Island have transformed unused and unsightly spaces into huge assets for our community. This development is the right choice. It would be a huge missed opportunity to let this project land elsewhere, especially when the alternative is that this would remain an undeveloped rail yard. Thank you.
Thank you. And last we hear from Frank.
Good morning. My name is Frank Clark, Director of Government Relations at the New York Building Congress, which represents over 500 organizations and 250,000 skilled tradespeople and professionals dedicated to the growth and prosperity of New York. We firmly support the Hudson Yards West proposal. When our association was founded in 1921, New York City and its building industry looked very different. But our progress has been defined by big, bold ideas that address many citywide challenges. That's how New York has grown over the decades. This project, Hudson Yards West, will serve as a blueprint for forward-thinking development shaped by public need. It will also help us achieve our combined goal of fostering a more prosperous and resilient future for the building and construction industry and its workers. Hudson Yards West will create thousands of union jobs, all while supporting local businesses that have yet to recover fully from the pandemic. Hudson Yards West is a critical proposal that supports the livelihood and future of our workers, and we cannot allow huge opportunities like this to pass us by. Locking in those 35,000 union jobs preserves middle-class pathways and apprenticeship pipelines. The benefits of the plan are massive and include 35,000 union construction jobs during development, a new 5.6-acre green public park, a new public K-8 school, daycare center, and a community facility, more than $2 billion in critical revenue for the MTA, and 4,000 units of housing in an area that so desperately needs it. By bringing together the best contractors, architects, engineers, and developers, Hudson Yards West will deliver what the city needs most: more jobs, new housing, better transit, and stronger communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This panel is excused. Thank you. Next, we hear from Robert Hammond, Cynthia Stark, Catherine LaFerty, thank you Catherine, and Michael Walsh.
We love Dixon's Farm Stand Meats, by the way, and Chelsea Market, lower level.
Right, the promotion. And the following group will consist of Cindy Ruby, Wright Harvey, Matthew Riker, and Brian Chen. We'll begin first with Catherine.
Good afternoon, Chair Riley and Councilmember Botcher. Thanks so much for allowing the members of the public to be here. I just want to reiterate, I'm a member of the West 47th, 48th Street Block Association and a Hell's Kitchen resident for 25 years. I remember when there was no bike path, unfortunately, along the Hudson, and the community has benefited so much from all of the work along the Hudson River Park. And I think it would be a shame to sabotage both the internationally renowned High Line, you know, which is like the first thing on everyone's list when they come to New York for the past 15 years in terms of sites to visit, and also the amazing work up and down the Hudson River Park with a slide where adults can slide and an amazing bike path. And I just question, though I appreciate that Related has come to the table with additional housing units. There are still only 324 affordable units, and we desperately need more, in my opinion. But I also just want to say that I think that the plan is still a thinly veiled attempt to get a casino license. And so I am adamantly opposed to the proposed rezoning of the Western rail yards. And I encourage Related to stay in conversation with Community Board Four. It's a shame that you weren't ready in time to have more talks to them because members of the public have been coming for months to hearings like this, giving up our time. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Cindy? One second. Can I get your name, ma'am?
Cynthia Stargie.
You're Cindy? So Cindy, you're in the next panel. So you could move from the table right now. You'll be in the next one.
Oh, in the next panel.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Cynthia, you go ahead.
Yes, I'm Cynthia Stargie. I'm the co-chair at the 100 block of West 1920. And I'm super bummed to have to be here once again to ask you to vote "no" on this agreement or this application. I'll keep my comments brief, but it was never agreed by us to build a casino or Supertalls. We don't want and never agreed to a casino. Indeed, national data demonstrates that casinos bring little to nothing of value to communities, bring less desirable tourism, provide only low-paying jobs, and use more resources generating city revenue. We don't want and never agreed to compromising sunlight on the Javits Center roof's sustainable and unique ecosystem. The Javits roof includes a farm, a green roof, a bee colony, and the habitat of the New York City Bird Alliance that's witnessed 65 bird species, five bat species, and hundreds of arthropod species using the roof. So please revert Related's proposal to the 2009 agreement, stop the degradation of Manhattan, and please vote "no" on this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Michael Walsh.
Hi, I'd like to thank you all for allowing this opportunity to speak. Thank you to the committee. My name is Michael Walsh, and I am a longtime resident of Chelsea. I have been an active parent at PS11 for over a decade, and I am the head of the Chelsea Green Park, Friends of Chelsea Green Park. Chelsea Green Park is a park that's very active with the toddler and young families in our community. And I do mean the whole West Side. We draw people from the North, from the South. And so I come here today in speaking on behalf of young families, a group that has really been hard-hit in Manhattan and the city at large lately. And we have huge concerns about the plan on the table, and we ask you to vote "no." We're concerned about the light and shadow issues in the site. We're concerned about the ancillary dangers of a casino in our community and the lack of affordable housing. So I am glad that Councilmember Botcher brought up the 2009 plan. And I understand that the world has changed, but the goals of that plan are still relevant. And so I say to you and to everyone here today, if you are dedicated to the success of the Eastern rail yards, to what we have today that is known as Hudson Yards, then you are dedicated to the goals of the compromises that were made in that plan. If you are dedicated to the union jobs, jobs in small businesses that are now a part of the current Hudson Yards, and you are dedicated to the goals of the commitments that were made in 2000 plan. If you are dedicated to the retail, to the commerce, and to the shed which make up the current Hudson Yards, and you are dedicated to the compromises that were made in the 2009 plan. So I ask you to vote "no" on this. I think it should go back to the table. We are incrementally moving forward towards a possibility of a plan, and I just don't think we are there yet. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. And last, we hear from Robert.
Hi, I'm Robert Hammond. I was, or I guess I am, a co-founder of the High Line. I was Executive Director for about 23 years of the High Line. I love change. I actually like development. I actually like tall buildings. But in this case, I would strongly urge you to reject this. And I'm actually not going to talk about all the deficiencies of the plan. I think other people can talk about that more eloquently. These are depressing times for many of us, and someone asked me, "What are you optimistic about?" And actually, I told him this story about this fight. This is a fight against a developer in an out-of-town Las Vegas casino operator against people in the neighborhood, the city, community groups, block associations. And I think I feel so overwhelmed with what's happening in government. And again, this is not going to fix the bigger issues we face, but if this is an example where the government actually listens to the people that live in our neighborhood and our city, to me, that gives, just like the High Line on one hand was a small community project, but it had ripples all over the country. And so I think this victory of the community and citizens against this project is a great, happy story in these very tough times. So I urge the council to vote "no."
Thank you so much. There being no questions for this panel, this panel is excused. Next, we'll have Cindy Ruby, Wright Harvey, Matthew Riker, and Brian Chen. The following group after this panel will consist of Luanna Green, Iridi Costil, Andrea Alderman, and same person? Give me somebody else. Opposition. And Sharon Brown for the next group. First, we'll begin with Cindy.
Good morning, and thank you so much for allowing me to be here and speak to you guys. My name is Cindy Ruby Estrada. I am the Executive Director of the New York City Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Our mission is to ensure that Latino-owned businesses and working families have a fair shot at success in this city. And the Hudson Yards West project represents exactly the kind of opportunity we need more of. This is not just a development project. It's a catalyst for economic empowerment. The project will create tens of thousands of good-paying jobs and offer viable job training for our members spanning construction, hospitality, maintenance, IT operations, and more. In other words, this project will open doors for thousands of New Yorkers, many of them from communities of color who have historically been left out this growth. from communities of color who have historically been left out this growth before. Just as importantly, and I understand that this is not what we are discussing right now, whether you are against or for the casino, the $1 billion community benefit package is what we need to provide real resource into workforce's development, small business support, and local nonprofits. There are 5,000 jobs in the casino, jobs our city needs. At a time when many small businesses are trying to make ends meet, and families are struggling to stay in the city they helped build, we cannot afford to let this opportunity slip away. The Hispanic Chamber of Commerce stands behind this project, and we urge the council to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we hear from Wright Harvey.
Good morning, Chairman Riley, Councilman, Councilmember Botcher. What an honor it is to be here, speaking with you this morning at City Hall. My name is Wright Harvey. I'm here to talk about jobs, however perhaps not the more visible jobs like the $35,000, 35,000 construction jobs we've heard about. I'm a small business owner, and I run a business that connects artists, think painters, sculptors, with opportunities in real estate. These real estate opportunities not only put art into the world, they're an important lifeline for the artist community. They help artists afford materials, workspace, cover living expenses, and more importantly, allow them to make our lives that much richer. Take a moment to look around this beautiful room and imagine a world without artists. When these real estate opportunities go away, the artist community suffers. The Western Rail Yards is an important opportunity for New York artists. Think of the public art commissions for the 5.6 acres of public space, the buildings, lobbies, and interiors, prominent commercial tenants buying art for their offices, residents collecting art for their homes, potentially gaming operators who are big consumers of art to create unique and exciting experiences for their guests. Related Companies is one of, if not the best, real estate developer in the world. They have a track record of supporting artists and nonprofits as part of their projects. They support artists not because they have to, but because it's one component of building a vibrant, successful community. They do it because it's the right thing to do. I personally strongly support Related Companies, and I strongly encourage us to give them the support they need to take on this immense challenge and build a neighborhood we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we hear from Matthew Riker.
Good afternoon. I'm Matt Riker. I'm the Community and Business Development Manager at New York Waterway, with whom I'm speaking on behalf. We provide ferry service along more than a dozen routes connecting numerous ferry facilities on the Hudson River, East River, and throughout New York Harbor. Our intramodal services link transportation facilities and the associated communities across the region to Manhattan. As someone who spent decades working on the front lines of regional transportation, I know that for New York City to remain livable, competitive, and connected, we need to think seriously about long-term infrastructure and sustainable growth. And that's why we support the Hudson Yards West proposal. This project is not just about a new world-class casino, and frankly, that's not what we're deciding on today. This is about investing in the systems that keep New York moving. With the MTA facing one of the most serious fiscal challenges in its history, Hudson Yards West offers a reliable stream of revenue that will stabilize, help stabilize and strengthen our transit network for years to come. It also delivers up to 4,000 much-needed homes in a transient-rich, job-rich corridor. This will expand access to opportunity and keep more New York, New Yorkers connected to the city they love. And it does all this while adding green space, a new public school, and direct community reinvestment. We also believe the project is uniquely designed to benefit from an existing robust waterborne transit system that can and does link Hudson Yards with points throughout New York and New Jersey. The increased service, which we anticipate will be needed as a result of this project, is achievable operationally with minimal impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Expanded service will not only benefit visitors to the area, potentially alleviating car traffic. This expansion will be a reminder of all we have to gain by connecting and working together to create economic opportunity while minimizing the environmental impact of improved regional access. This is the kind of big, integrated thinking we need to build a stronger, more resilient city. New York Waterway supports this project, and I encourage the council to advance it. Thank you.
Thank you. And last we hear from Brian Chen.
Thank you, Chair Riley, Councilmember Botcher, subcommittee members for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Brian Chen, and I am the chief strategy officer at the Chinese-American Planning Council. We are a 60-year-old social service organization rooted in community and anchored across 35 sites throughout New York City, serving 80,000 individuals and families annually. From early childcare and after-school programs to English literacy classes and older adult programming, our holistic services ensure community members not only survive, but thrive. The Chinese-American Planning Council is supportive of the inclusive, community-integrated workforce and economic development potential of the Hudson Yards West Project, as it aligns with our agency's mission to promote the social and economic empowerment of immigrant and low-income New Yorkers. Through the project's commitment to support workforce training, job creation, and career advancement, including 35,000 union construction jobs and 5,000 permanent union jobs, Hudson Yards West is positioned to be an opportunity hub inclusive of the small business community and the city's diverse but often marginalized populations, including the multilingual and multi-generational immigrants, individuals with disabilities, and unemployed and underemployed residents served by community organizations such as the Chinese-American Planning Council. Furthermore, Hudson Yards West has also pledged to partner with our agency's workforce development programs, giving our constituents a real stake in the project. CPC, the Chinese-American Planning Council, is committed to collaborating with the Hudson Yards West team to ensure their efforts remain inclusive and benefit the widest possible range of New Yorkers. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. There being no questions, this panel is excused. The next panel will consist of Sharon Brown, Iredy Costel, Andrea Alderman, and Luanna The following panel will consist of Pat McCain, Shakar Crawford, Shandra Singh, and Abbott DePas. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. That'll be the following. First we will begin with Luanna Green.
My name is Luanna Green, and I am an active resident at Penn South Community, which is the largest affordable co-op apartment complex on the west side. The High Line is our neighborhood's park, so I have a speech that's written. I have lived in Chelsea for 55 years. I have been to the High Line when it was just a rail yard with rail trains running along the track. So now the High Line is a beautiful park. We don't need a new Bryant Park. We have a park. It's called the High Line, and we like to keep it like that. So I live in Chelsea, and I'm a little nervous, but I live in Chelsea, and Chelsea is a beautiful community. And right now Chelsea is under attack, and under attack with Related and all its promises that they can't keep. Every time we turn around, Related has changed their plans. So now they're changing their plans with this project, and they're changing their plans with the Chelsea Elliott Houses to demolish them. Related just wants to build a whole town for itself, and we're against it. We're against this proposal, and we're against Related, period. The other thing is, you talk about affordable housing. In Chelsea, the average income is over $200,000. The median income is over $150,000, $15,000. So when you talk about affordable housing, who are you talking about? Who are you building for? We talk about jobs and everything. There's housing going up all over the city. There's so many jobs all over the city. So I'm just confused as to why we keep going over these plans over and over again. We see that Related cannot be trusted, they cannot keep their word, they go back and they change their plans, and we are against them changing the west side High Line and changing the west side rails. And we are against this proposal, and we ask you to also vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we hear from Andrea Alderman.
Hi, my name is Andrea Adelman. I am your constituent in Hell's Kitchen, previously in Chelsea. I want you to ask yourself, what's truly in the public interest here? Truly the public interest? Whose voices are here today? Whose voices aren't being heard? What is the, what is the public interest that's really being served here today? There is so much darkness in the world today, and we can do something about that. Let there be open space. Let there be sunlight. Let us glean the proven scientific benefits to the human psyche when looking at a body of water. Let there be light. Let there be parks in the public interest.
Thank you. Next we'll hear from Iredy, Iredy Costel. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Hello, my name is Iredy Costel. I am a volunteer at La Nacional Spanish Finevolence Society, an important community institution in Chelsea. I'm here today because I'm concerned that this development plan is going to hurt the local small businesses around it. The design of the casino, the business model, is to bring people into this giant building and keep them there at all the restaurants in the same building, so that they keep gambling. That means nobody leaves to explore the great restaurants and nightlife on Ninth Avenue in Chelsea and Hell's Kitchen. And in fact, those businesses lose traffic as they, as people go to the fancy restaurants and the casino. It doesn't have to be that way. I don't support any particular projects, but I know the Times Square Casino proposal is designed to make sure the casino guests explore and dine at the restaurant around Times Square. That's helping small business, not hurting it. I hope the city council considers the interests of the small businesses as it evaluates this land use application and votes no. Thank you.
Thank you. And last Sharon Brown.
Hello, my name is Sharon Brown. Before I begin, remember Israel, release the hostages, let Yahweh's people go, defend Israel. Okay, I want to change, I'm for it. I checked in opposition, I want to put for. Okay, Hudson Yards West should go forward with the casino. They can include other things besides casino and other entertainment so that it won't just be a casino. Many of the people have problems with a casino because they think that it's only going to be a casino. Maybe they couldn't go back to the drawing board and put some other things there for entertainment. And for the housing there, we need to make sure that it is there for homeless military veterans and homeless people. So the priority should be for homeless military veterans and homeless if they're going to make housing. If you keep making housing and the people that are military and homeless are still out on the streets, then you, you haven't done anything except shift someone from where they live to a new place to live. So we need people who actually need the housing to get in there. And the first people that should be considered for the jobs on these projects to build should be the homeless, the military veterans, and things like that. They are very skilled, very qualified. They are just without homes. They have everything that everyone else has, that they should have a home, that they should be able to take care of these jobs. If there are 5,000 jobs, the majority should be for people who need jobs and are skilled, homeless military veterans and the homeless. The construction jobs also, and I'm part Native American, and casinos are not seedy, they are not problematic, it's the way people handle them and run them. Just a few seconds. Make sure that they are run properly and that people conduct themselves. There should be some kind of oversight to make sure that we don't fall into the same problems that made casinos go out of business.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
You're welcome.
There being no questions for this panel, this panel is excused. The next panel I'll be calling up will consist of Pat McCain, Shakar Crawford, I believe, Shandra Snee Osni, and Albert DePas. Please excuse me if I mispronounced your name. The following panel will consist of Anahi Seldon, Elaine Capella, Heba Seigar, and Vivek Sinai? How you pronounce your last name?
Singh.
Singh, thank you. First we'll begin with Albert.
Thank you for having me here. My name is Alberta DePa. I have been living in New York for 50 years. Starting in high school, I got involved with community, helped the Fort Greene Landmark to declare Fort Greene a landmark area. From there, I did an internship for city planning and become a graphic designer for 25 years, working on the mayor coach through Mayor Blumberg. I have seen the city change greatly, and at the core of those changes, city planning had one consideration in mind: quality of life. The High Line has provided a greater quality of life, not just for Chelsea, for the west side, for the whole city, for the whole United States, and for the whole world to come and enjoy and relax. And to bring a casino in that area where we have children, schools, is not a good thing. I ask Related to voluntarily, in good faith, withdraw their design for a casino development in that area, and sit down with the community's elected official and give consideration to quality of life. Society is in a crisis right now. If we do not set the platform for the young people coming up, we are going to be worse and worse and worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we hear from Shandra Singh.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Shandra Singh, and I'm a proud member of the Hotel and Gaming Trades Council. I am here with other members on behalf of our union to testify in support of the Western Rail Yard Project. This project will be a huge win not just only for the community, but for all New Yorkers. The hotel and casino will create thousands of much-needed, good-paying jobs with benefit while creating new homes. Our city is in the midst, middle of a housing crisis, and the developer recently announced that this project will create 4,000 apartments. This is more than double the amount of unit originally planned, and show that Western Rail Yard is committed to the community needs. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to help New Yorkers who need job and housing. I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Ms. Crawford?
Good afternoon, councilmembers. It's an honor being here today. Shout out to HTC, shout out to the Bronx. My name is Shakira Crawford, and I'm a proud hospitality worker and a member of the Hotel and Gaming Trades Council. I am here on behalf of my union to testify in support of the Western Rail Yards Project. This project gives our city an opportunity to create thousands, thousands of very high-quality jobs, including permanent hospitality jobs like mine. These jobs will lift up New Yorkers and boost economic activity, not just in Chelsea, but across the city, which we need now more than ever. So I urge you, I please urge you, to vote yes on this. So I urge you, I please urge you to vote yes on this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Pat.
Thank you, members of the subcommittee, and thank you Chair Riley and Councilmember Boccher. SEIU 32BJ is the largest union of property service workers in the United States, representing over 175,000 property service workers across our jurisdictions, including 90,000 in New York City, at least 1,000 of which are employed by Related. 32BJ members form the backbone of New York's property services industry. Our members are workers, are the workers who keep the city's commercial and residential buildings, stadiums, airports, and other public facilities safe, clean, and running. 32BJ is here today in support of Related Company's ULP application for the Western Rail Yard modifications. The application proposed a mixed-use development inclusive of over 4,000 new units of housing, over five acres of public open space, and more on the currently undeveloped Western Rail Yard in Manhattan's Hudson Yards neighborhood. This increase in housing will benefit the Hudson Yards area and surrounding neighborhoods. I'm pleased to report that 32BJ has secured a credible commitment from Related Companies for the creation of good jobs for the workers who will permanently staff the residential and commercial office portions of this proposed development. These workers will join the 1,000, join the over 1,000 32BJ residential workers, commercial cleaners, and security officers who work at Related Companies' properties across the city. In addition to the important job creation that will come from this project, the developer has proposed the construction of 4,000 new units of housing. Large-scale, mixed-income residential projects like this one are crucial to chipping away at New York's massive housing shortage. 32BJ is proud to support this ULP application and looks forward to the approval of this proposal. Thank you to the zoning subcommittee for the opportunity to comment on this project.
Thank you. There being no questions for this panel, this panel's excused. Thank you for your testimony. Next, we hear from Inahhe Selden, Elaine Capella, Heba Seeger, and Vivek Singh. The following panel will consist of Ash Woltson, Toshia Miller, Michael Vestarelli, and Lawrence Lippman. And just wanted to announce, for those of you online, we will be about less than an hour before we transition to online testimony. Okay? First, we'll begin with Vivek. Just press the button, Vivek. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for lending your audience. First, about myself, I was born and raised in Phoenix, spent 30 years in, living in the same house. I thought I'd never find another place that would become home. I moved to New York at 30, first in Greenwich Village, then came to the area where I live today, and it has become my home. This place is, it was first, I first moved for the convenience of the location to, relative to Penn Station, but as things have opened up, it has become a truly special place. I've started, we've started to see families, young adults, retirees, all call this place home. And when the pandemic hit, we started our own family, and it turned out many others, disproportionately large number of others in our area, did as well. The concerns that I have are around, are around some of the impacts. Naturally, a lot of it's around the casino. So I did, I did my research, and the most relevant study that I found was the impact of casino proximity on northeast urban communities by nature from February 22, including New York City. There were, there were increases in, in jobs, but they're not necessarily local to that area. But there's also adverse businesses that we don't want to see in that area, especially with how much family, or how attractive the area has become towards families. Further, the enlargement of the buildings in, in the revisement of the proposal, we've started to increase, see increases in wind already because of the other large buildings, and it's manageable today, but I fear that those changes from some of these, from the revisement of the proposal. I did enjoy seeing those pictures on the screen, but I, but I think that that's in relative to not having, not having that 2009 proposal. I also want to call attention to one more thing. Coming from, sorry, coming from Phoenix, I know a lot of people who have moved to Vegas, and, but the nice thing that they have is, they don't, the casino's on that strip, they don't have the, the challenge of having it in their community directly. We don't have that such a luxury.
Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Capella.
Hi there. I'm Alan Van Capel. I'm the executive director of Friends of the High Line. In our 25-year history, we have been partners in our neighborhood's growth. We have never once opposed a single development or rezoning in our vicinity, and we know how much growth has taken place along the mile and a half park that is the High Line. From the outset, this proposal was conceived without the vital input of those who live nearby, and that is why you are hearing so many voices opposed to this bad plan. The High Line would become windier and darker, and the hallmark sensation of a floating within the city would be lost. View corridors would be blocked by an unprecedented 200-foot-high building podium. The space within the development footprint would shrink, the renderings of the lush greenery are deceptive. The space would be cast in shadow for all but two hours, two and a half hours during the day, and the Bryant Park comparison, while it's interesting, Bryant Park receives 15 hours of sunlight during an average summer day. Connectivity to the neighborhood would be lost, and the public space would be, in effect, privatized in service to a casino and to a resort. The 2009 plan created a balance between super-tall density of the Eastern Rail Yards and a vision of a lower-rise, more sustainable development for the Western Rail Yards. The current proposal represents a stark departure from what we bargained for back then. This unvetted public financing scheme brought at the 11th hour and 59 minutes with no meaningful community support. They are asking the city to absorb the financial risk of their casino-based project, and taxpayers should not be rolling the dice on this scheme. This press release of a shaky proposal asks taxpayers to risk billions of dollars for a project with limited public benefit, a casino and 92% luxury condominiums. This couldn't be more different from what we all envisioned in 2009. Let's not lose what we have so carefully worked for together.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Heba. Hyba?
Hi, yes, Heba.
Heba?
Yes, I'm Heba Seeger. I'm a volunteer at the High Line, and I wanted to first talk about the small business impacts. So the developers talk about how small businesses are going to flourish once this proposal goes through. They use the words both casino and resort. The two things those have in common is, everything is in-house. What people will do is they'll gamble, they'll eat and drink at the restaurants, they'll go back to their hotel or call an Uber and go home. There's little or no interaction with the community. And in regards to the quality of life, I live about a 10-minute walk from a Costco, and it takes up two blocks and one full avenue. It's huge. And the size of this casino is six of those warehouses on top of each other. So when we're talking about shadows, we will lose so much sunlight and just visual interest from the High Line. We're so, it's such a unique situation because it's elevated, and Councilman Boccher said earlier that New Yorkers are proprietary about their space, and I couldn't agree more. And we are that way for a reason. Green spaces and open spaces are so beneficial to mental health, and it doesn't get more New York than the High Line. We started off with the rail, railroads coming in, it gets deserted, almost was going to be destructed, and then the community came together and said, why don't we actually repurpose this? And now we have this going on till today. And we're not, I'm not against development, and the High Line's position is not against development, it's that this proposal in particular does not help the community. It's got to be something else. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we hear from Inahhe.
My name is Inahle Selden. I'm a resident of Hell's Kitchen, and I'm a docent on the High Line. I'm going to take you on a little tour of the High Line. Most of the points I was going to make have already been made, so I'm going to tear this up, and I'll tell you what it's like on the High Line. When you talk to locals who are visiting the High Line, national, international visitors, when you mentioned this project for a casino and a resort that takes up roughly half the space that was originally designed for the common good, they say, what? Are you crazy? This is in English, this is in Italian, this is in French, and we have a lot of visitors from Korea, and they say, as others do, we have the same problem with development that you do here. Why don't we give the world a different example? Why don't we eliminate, or at least mitigate, the reputation of New York as the world capital of greed? Because that's what this project says to the residents, the local residents, the residents on the Upper West Side, Upper East Side, the Bronx, and other places, that this is a completely ridiculous proposal. And if you need advice on sunlight, as Alan said, the research has already been done. You don't have to spend money to find out how much sunlight will hit your landscaping. Show New York that it listens to its constituency and listens, and this committee listens to the voters of New York. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boccher has a question for this panel.
A question for Alan Van Capel. Hi, Alan. Are you totally wedded to the 2009 plan?
Thank you, council member. Look, I think what's important about the 2009 plan is that it was worked on together. It was a negotiated process that took, as I understand, many, many months to get to fruition. Not everybody was happy with everything in that plan, and this seems to be a real departure from what was worked on in 2009.
Are you opposed to the idea of, you know, it was characterized earlier that you weren't willing to be really collaborative? Are you, are you opposed to the idea of sitting down and coming up with something that works for the High Line?
Look, I think what we, we met multiple times. The applicant seems to have counted the amount of times. I didn't take the time to count, but fair enough to say we had many conversations. I just don't think they've proven themselves to be good listeners. I do want to say, council member, they're our neighbors. They're going to continue to be our neighbors. Our staffs work on, with each other, on a host of operational and security issues every single day. This is a rupture. At some point, there'll be a repair. We very much want to see that site developed. We encourage the applicant to withdraw their application, to sit down with the community board, and start back at the drawing board. They have a timeline and a deadline at the end of June. I don't believe there's going to be an opportunity for the community to negotiate something before, between now and when their application for a casino has to get in. And I think if they had started with the community instead of giving us a full-formed project at the beginning, we wouldn't be here today. They did make minor adjustments, but when they notched back a building, they pushed the other corner of the building further closer to the High Line. So I really don't think those were tweaks, and as our professional architects who've reviewed the plans have said, this plan is so bad, it's not tweakable. It literally has to be withdrawn and start over from scratch.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you. This panel's excused. Thank you so much. Our next panel will consist of Ash Woltson, Toshia Miller, Michael Vestarelli, and Lawrence Lippman. The following panel will consist of Patricia Sharkey, Reverend Noel Zarek, Kathy Rugros, I believe, and Richard Grazino will be the following panel. I'll repeat the names again. Lawrence Lippman, Michael Vestarelli, Tasha Miller, and Ash Woltson. If you hear your name, please come up to the panel. Can I get both of your names real quick?
Michael Vestarelli.
Tasha Miller.
Is Lawrence Lippman or Ash Woltson here? Tasha, you may begin.
My name is Tasha Miller, the president of the New York City Black Chamber of Commerce. Our mission is to create opportunities for black-owned businesses and support economic mobility for working families across Five Boroughs. That's why I'm proud to speak in support of the Hudson Yards West proposal. This proposal isn't just about buildings, it's about whether we're still capable of building a city that works for everyone. We know that the stakes are, our rent are rising, middle class is shrinking, and, sorry, and still recovering from impact of the pandemic. Elected officials should be looking for big projects that deliver revenue, create more housing, encourage tourism, and create good-paying jobs. Hudson Yards West does all of that and more. It will also generate billions in reliable revenue for MTA, create new public green spaces, and invest directly in community-based organizations. It is an example of what can happen when we think innovatively about our city's needs and growth. New York promises has always been about opportunity, but that promise only holds if we keep building for the future. The Black Chamber of Commerce supports the project, and we urge city council to move forward with it.
Thank you. Next, we have from Michael.
Good afternoon, council members, members of committee, and everybody in attendance today. My name is Michael Vestarelli, and I'm proud to serve as a business representative for the New York City District Council of Carpenters, representing thousands of hard-working union carpenters across the city. I'm here today to voice strong support for the Western Yards plan proposed by Related Companies. Related has a long-proven track record of working with the carpenters to deliver major projects that not only transform our skyline, but also lift up our communities with good-paying jobs and family-sustaining jobs. At Hudson Yards, Related kept its word by committing to strong labor standards and building one of the most significant union construction projects in the country. We are proud to say our members had a major hand in building that vision into reality. And now, the Western Yards represents an opportunity to finish what we started, to transform a still-undeveloped part of the city with world-class construction while creating thousands of union jobs along the way. This project will bring years of employment for carpenters, skilled men and women who live in the Five Boroughs, who pay taxes here, raise their families here, and reinvest in the strength of our neighborhoods. Simply put, Related's Western Yards plan represents a real investment in New York City's future, an investment built by union hands with union values and union standards. On behalf of the New York City District Council of Carpenters and the working families we represent, I urge to approve this plan and help us continue building a better New York. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. There being no questions for this panel, you're excused. Thank you. Next, I'm going to call Patricia Sharkey, Reverend Noel Zarek, Kathy Rugros, I'm sorry for mispronouncing her name, and Richard Grazino. The following group after that will consist of Kareem Holmes, Omar Ahmed, Wasim Ahmed, and Karen Flattery, I believe. We'll begin with Richard.
Good morning. My name is Richard Graziano, and I am a volunteer docent on the High Line. And if it's anything I've known or learned about the High Line is that change is a constant. There are buildings going up every day, and some change is good, buildings that allow for light and air, and some change is bad. The proposed- The proposed building of this 20-story monolith on the west side of the Western Yards is bad change. As someone who had a 51-year teaching career in the New York City Public Schools and the City University of New York, one of the things that I learned is that when you make a commitment, if you want a relationship with the people around you, in this case, the community, you live up to your commitment. In 2009, Related committed to a plan of mixed use, housing, schools, and open space. Now they're trying to renege on that commitment, and we need to make sure that they live up to the commitment that they did. Now, the proposed monolith that might include a casino is inward-looking, as has been mentioned before by someone. The people who go to those casinos are inward-looking. They eat in, dine in, drink in, and they don't go to the local community. And so, all you need to do is look at Atlantic City or Ozone Park where no one goes to the local community. So I urge the council to say no to this very bad plan or bad change for the High Line and for the local community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Patricia.
I've been a Chelsea resident for the past 30 years. I live on 19th Street. And during this time, I've watched the High Line evolve from an idea to a destination that's beloved by local residents and international visitors as well. I walk to work on the High Line. I work at 59th. And I see parents escorting their children to school. I see folks taking in just a bit of fresh air. I see people enjoying the quality of life that it offers. And as I walk to work in the morning, I think about the Hudson River, and I look at it where I can see it now. And I'm a history nerd, so I think about Henry Hudson. I think about George Washington and interactions along the Hudson. I think about Alexander Hamilton rowing to his final debacle in Weehawken. But I've watched, as I've watched and walked over the years, I've watched views disappear. What was once open space and sunlight is now a corridor through high-rises. And that affects the quality of life for everyone, not just for me, but for everyone here in New York City. You can't put a price on a view of the Hudson River. And I'm really speaking for aesthetic reasons, which means quality of life, and that affects everyone. Once views of the Hudson River are gone, they are gone forever. I just ask that the people who make the decisions respect this place and its history.
Thank you, Patricia. Reverend Noel Zarek?
Vannick, yes.
Vannick, yes.
Glad to be here. Thank you. I'm retired minister, live in Chelsea. I just want to leave you with two thoughts. One, you've heard a lot of speaking about urgency, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The only thing I've heard that's urgent is the deadline for the casino application. Other than that, the better thing to do would be to go back to the drawing board with the community groups and mimic the process that produced the 1989 URB that was agreed on. It needs to be changed, but it needs to be done with community input at a steady but careful pace. Secondly, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. The High Line is one of the greatest things New York City has done in the last 25 years. Don't endanger its beauty and magnanimity. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. And last, Kathy, last name begins with an R. If you are Kathy, you begin with an R, your last name. She's not here? All right, thank you. There being no questions, this panel is excused. Thank you so much. Next, we hear from Kareem Holmes, Omar Ahmed, Wasim Ahmed, and Karen, last name begins with an F. We'll begin first with Kareem.
Hello. My name is Kareem Holmes. I'm the president, founder, CEO of Big City Tourism, the first black-owned SICian business, and probably the only black-owned SICian business in the Hudson Yards area. I'm originally from the Lower East Side of Manhattan, born and raised in the projects of Lower East Side Jacob Rees. I recently, in the last four years, developed my small business, and I operate out of Pier 78, which is on the west side in Hudson Yards. It's been a great experience of being able to create my small business and change the lives of many people. What I do understand, this whole process, because I was on the community side when I was in the Lower East Side and experienced a lot of the gentrification and big businesses coming in to build. Here, in this situation, I really am for the win in them building a business because they are bringing lots of opportunity to the area. This proposal will build a great success in the Hudson Yards, which everyone here should acknowledge has been a big boost to our city and brought new visitors to the west side of Manhattan. It will create tens of thousands of union construction jobs, 5,000 permanent union jobs, spanning hospitality, operation, and retail, the same industries that drive New York's tourism economy. These are the kinds of jobs that lift up working people and support families for the long haul. Just as important are the long-term benefits. Some housing are permanent, a premier gaming destination, more green space, and a community benefit package that will fund local services, workforce training, and a foundation dedicated to supporting the neighborhood directly. That's the kind of investment that helps to keep small businesses like mine strong. I'm for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Wasim Ahmed, a resident in Hell's Kitchen. I like the idea of 4,000 houses, housing, and more job opportunities. It's a good idea. We had a business in the area since 2010, you know, from 2012 and this construction and all that starts. It's a big difference until now. So I would like you guys to say yes for this project. Yes, please. Thank you.
Omar?
Good afternoon. How are you, how is everything? And thank you so much for this opportunity. Who can say no to schools? Who can say no for thousands of jobs in the neighborhood? Who can say no to this big project? You know, that's a 4,000, everybody's talking about stuff and all of that. That's a 4,000 housing and apartments in this project. That's a lot. That's 4,000 families will be in this, you know? And we trust Related Company. We already saw what they did, you know, everywhere, Hudson Yard and all the projects they've been doing. It's not like someone, we didn't know, he just come in here and saying, "I'm going to do that," and you didn't know. This is a trusted company. You see them, you know, you've seen their work before. So I say please, please, to say yes to this project because it's not just going to change the neighborhood only, the state and the country as well. Thank you so much.
Karen?
Yes, my name is Karen Flaherty. I'm a long-term, longtime resident since 1978 of East 17th Street. And current, well, the last decade, I've worked as a community activist. I cannot support this project based upon the casino being present on the west side of Manhattan. I think it will impact small business that is already surrounding the High Line. It's already difficult to find reasonable restaurants to go to if you wanted to go out for an event. The High Line gives us the opportunity to walk within nature, within the city. This past year, when I was diagnosed with cancer, that's the first place I went to, was the High Line in order to be able to just be outdoors and appreciate my life on this earth. I'm going to bring some words of Reverend Barber from the Poor People's Campaign into this meeting. He is talking, of course, in Washington DC now about policy, but I think we can take his words as well about community planning. He poses that the three key questions to evaluate any policy-community impact is, how is this policy or this community plan affecting people's living and dying? How is this community plan going to serve the most vulnerable? And are these planning policies, community building, redevelopment, addressing systemic inequalities? Thank you.
Thank you so much to this panel. You're excused. Ms. Karen, I hope you beat your cancer diagnosis, okay? Thank you for testifying.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
The next panel we're going to hear from is Leila Logisco, Tappy Hightower, Ife Adalona, and Keenan Porter. Once again, that is Leila Logisco, Ife Adalona, Tappy Hightower, and Keenan Porter. Ms. Leila, that's you? You may begin.
Thank you so much. My name is Leila Logisco. I am here as the president of the City Club of New York, a civic organization, here to speak about the proposal. We are told that Related Companies has modified the Hudson Yards Western Rail Yard Plan, but no meaningful details have been shared with this community. I want to focus on the pilot proposal. We hear that it is going to be creative financing, which is an euphemism for pilots, which is an euphemism for tax abatement. We are not getting any real numbers. None were shared today. And meanwhile, the burden of infrastructure will quietly be shifted onto the public. We know exactly where this road led with Phase 1 of Hudson Yards, which cost the city of New York $2 billion in lost tax revenue and bridge financing for bonds. Taxpayers underwrote the infrastructure while Related reaped the profits. Related has proven itself an unreliable partner, and it should not be rewarded for ignoring, renegotiating, or walking away from past commitments. Today, the commitment to affordable housing remains vague, too vague to be called a plan, and approving what's before us would be nothing short of signing a blank check. This plan must be sent back to the drawing board. New Yorkers deserve specifics, not sales pitch, and anything less is a disservice to the public. I really want to emphasize that it would be unconscionable for the New York City Casino to be tax-exempt or tax-abated. The City Council is not in the business of wealth management for private developers, but is in the business of protecting the public interest. Once again, it would be unconscionable that the casino in New York City be tax-exempt or tax-abated. This plan must be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before I get to the final two panels, just want to stay online. We have one more panel left before we transition to online. The last in-person panel will consist of Alithia LaFrogue, Carmen Mattis, Anna Osui, Olas, thank you, Jokeen Alino, and Luanna Green. That will be the final panel. If you did not hear your name and you wanted to testify, please see one of the sergeant at arms to submit a speaker's card. Next, we'll hear from Tappy.
Hi. My name is Tapuwanasei Hightower. I go by Tappy for most people's convenience. I'm from the Lower East Side, but I attend university in West Village. But I'm a neighbor who often works in and frequents the neighborhood of the Western Rail Yards. I'm going to keep this very brief, but the City Council is not being asked to vote on a casino. That much is true. However, by voting in agreement with a plan that includes a proposal for a casino or an application, excuse my language, the City Council would be enabling the development of a casino. As I stated in my introduction, I am a neighbor and not a resident of this neighborhood. However, as a neighbor, it is my responsibility to listen to the concerns of those who are in and of the community. And if New York is in dire need of a casino, there are much more ideal, practical locations that will not complicate the lives of our most vulnerable, which doesn't just include the shrinking middle class, that also includes a group that most people failed to mention, that most people failed to acknowledge for whatever reason, but it is also the low-income members of that household, or of those households. It also includes senior citizens and all of those who are vulnerable, as previously mentioned by other people, who are against this development plan. I urge the City Council to vote no on this.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Ife.
Hi. My name is Ife Adalona. I live in Hudson Yards and have lived there for seven years since the inception. I'm also a volunteer of the High Line, and I wanted to get to the first two points that were very stark to me. Job growth currently is concentrated in Manhattan, and other neighborhoods continue to experience higher unemployment. So adding jobs within this area will only further hinder other areas of New York from job creation. The many available positions that this proposed development plan is suggesting are mostly lower-wage service jobs rather than middle-income careers that would support living in an expensive city such as New York. The High Line is a special place for our community, and over the last 15 years, it has become one of the city's prized jewels, and an increase in dark, windy spaces and loss of connectivity to the surrounding areas would really make it bad for people who live in the community. We want to continue to support a vibrant, welcoming, and accessible part of the city, and this proposal does the opposite of that. I believe that views of the water, the Hudson River, are essential to the experience on the High Line. And living in Hudson Yards, a lot of the buildings that have since gone up really block these important views. So adding to this corridor, what's in this proposal would continue to block the cityscape and skyline views that create the magical sensation of floating in the city. And ultimately, the buildings being built close to the park would ruin the magic of the High Line experience. So I urge the City Council to vote no on this application.
Thank you. Keenan Porter, are you here? Keenan Porter. Okay, thank you so much for this panel. You're excused, and thank you to the chambers for disagreeing in peace. I see you guys. Next, we're going to have Alida LaFrogue, Carmen Mattis, Anna, Anne, Jokeen, and Luanna. And finally, we're going to have one last in-person panel that consists of Bridget, True Sims, and John Collins. Okay, Luanna?
Hello. My name is Jokeen Aleno. I'm from Elliott Chelsea Housing, and against the rezoning for Hudson Yards. There's so many things and so many problems with the plan that has been proposed by Related, and there are so many known and unknown consequences that we will face through the construction and finishing throughout all this. I'm not here to be redundant. We've heard and we know the problems, the wind, the shadows, the light, the school being built right next to the casino. But what I will say, as a member of this community, is I will not have my community be used to is I will not have my community be used to subsidize corporate loss and greed. They're using our community to make a profit, and the businesses that are in support here as well. While the community sees the carpet, these businesses and labor movements don't even see the rug underneath their nose. New York City, and in turn District Three, is a very delicate ecosystem. And to rezone with little community in sight, there will be no telling what this rezoning will bring. But what I can tell you is that the proposal has been opposed through almost every phase of this process. So to go against this approval and allow this rezoning is to ignore all levels of community in sight. Related can kick, scream, and represent whatever information they have to seem as favorable as they want. But this community sees right through them, and we're not here to back down. And one thing I will say before my time wraps up is, New York does not have a housing crisis. We have an affordability crisis. We can't pay to keep staying here. Related says the plan in 2009 is out of the window and they can't fix it. Well, guess what? Drop that contract and find somebody else who will. Take that loss on the chin and move on. Get somebody who will get it done. Oh yeah, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Ann.
Hi, my name is Ann, last name is A-U-S-T, Ost. And I live in Hell's Kitchen. And I've heard a lot of arguments for and against, and they're all compelling. But I have to say, I oppose the rezoning of this, of the High Line. And I feel, the way everybody that's opposing this, I agree with their reasons, and it all makes a lot of sense to me. And so I urge the City Council to please oppose the rezoning of the High Line. Thank you.
Thanks, Carmen.
Muy buenas tardes, good afternoon. I'm Carmen Mattis. I have lived for 50 years between Hell's Kitchen and I now live at Penn South Chelsea. I am an avid supporter of the High Line. I go there all the time. I'm a woman of a certain age. So you are talking to a senior when you talk to me. I am against the reevaluating of the 2009...
Proposal.
Proposal. And I am in favor of taking it all back to the drawing board and restarting. We do not need to dwarf the High Line with no sunshine. We do not need more unaffordable housing. But we do need people, and we do need jobs. I don't necessarily think that it'll be the jobs that a casino will give us, but I do think that we need more work in this neighborhood. We need more housing, we need more sunlight, and we need to support our jewel, the High Line. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. There be no question of this panel's excuse. Thank you for testifying today. I have one more panel, which consists of Tom Morris, Bridget Granby, True Sims, and John Collins. If I did not call your name and you wanted to testify and you're in the chambers, please see one of the sergeant-at-arms to submit a speaker's card. After this, we will be transitioning to online testimony. First, we'll begin with John Collins.
Good afternoon, I'm John Collins. I'm a docent on the High Line, and I stand firmly opposed to the development plan for the casino and the drastic reduction in promised housing. The plan is not a value add to the residents, the High Line, or the millions of visitors who come here each year. It only benefits Win and Related, not our city. The High Line transformed this neighborhood. Why? Because it balanced the needs of the community, it preserved nature along with urban life, and provided a way for people to experience New York from a whole new perspective, 30 feet in the air, surrounded by art, architecture, and history. This casino complex shatters that balance. It does not complement the High Line. It will degrade one of the most beloved spaces in New York City. Now, originally, the plan called for nearly 5,700 residences. I've heard 52. It now provides less than 2,000, but maybe it's 4,000. That's not a compromise, it's greed. Developers say that the plan isn't economically feasible, but saving the High Line wasn't feasible in 1999 either. But smart, brave minds, in the form of Joshua David, Robert Hammond, and others, made it possible. Be smart, be brave, and execute a vision that benefits everyone, not just a few corporations. It's not impossible, it's only impossible if you don't try. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from True.
Thank you for letting me speak today. I strongly, I'm strongly against the proposed casino at Hudson Yards West. I currently live on 16th Street and 8th Avenue, less than a mile from the proposed casino location. I have lived and worked in and around Chelsea since 1980. The High Line has brought both locals and tourists, including many families from around the city and the world, to the far west side of Manhattan, which in the 1980s, as many of you may recall, was quite bleak. The change has been good and positive. The original 2009 Hudson Yards West plan, as you know, was envisioned primarily as a residential neighborhood with a focus on green space. There was a commitment for affordable housing, a new public school, and other community-focused initiatives. It was designed, in my opinion, to be family-friendly. There is no way that a casino and family-friendly go together. And so now this plan has become something totally different. Once you add a casino, you lose the positives. No good will come from building this casino, for all the reasons everybody already knows. New York does not need this casino or any casinos. There are plenty of things to do and ways to be entertained and make lots of money in New York City without the proposed Hudson Yards West Casino. We can do better than this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Bridget?
Hi, my name is Bridget Gramling. I live on the Upper West Side currently, but I lived on 23rd Street in Chelsea for the first eight years that I lived in New York. I still spent a lot of time in Chelsea and the Hudson Yards, volunteering for several nonprofits, including the High Line. The High Line is one of my favorite places in the city, and when I lived in Chelsea, it was my sidewalk. I've thrown out the majority of my comments, because you don't need to hear everything over again, but I do want to emphasize the wind issues that are a part of this current proposal. I don't think I heard them say today that the impact is going to be felt as far south as 23rd Street. Currently, in Hudson Yards, the High Line has to be closed in the rail yard section regularly because of the wind issues from the current Hudson Yards project. You can hear the wind whipping through there, especially in the wintertime. And closing that section of the park eliminates a lot of really wonderful views and really wonderful experience, especially the self-seated landscape that's still currently there. If you extend that all the way down to 23rd Street, it's possible that 2/3 of the park would be closed on any given day, which would significantly limit people's ability to experience the park. And I think that that would be a tragedy and a travesty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your time today. My name is Tom Morris. I've lived in the West Village for a little more than 26 years now. And as with many of those speakers here today, I am a frequent user of and volunteer with Friends of the High Line. I don't have a lot to add to, you know, so many of the things that we've been talking today. We've heard many times. When we were hearing the High Line as one of the jewels in New York City's crown, at least on the west side of Manhattan, hearing it compared to, well, the casino and the Hudson Yards rezoning plan, compared to the High Line and the Whitney Museum and Hudson River Park and Little Island, I kind of sensed a ripple of dissonance about, you know, what on this list, what does not belong on this list? Because it is so different. You know, the Hudson Yards is mostly inside, and in terms of experience, it is very different from the Whitney Museum and the High Line and Hudson River Park and Little Island. And over the years that I've been here and involved with the High Line, yes, you know, we've seen many changes, as other people have expressed here. I am not opposed to change. I am not opposed to development. You know, these are good things, but they need to be worked on carefully. And this is not the right plan. This is not the right way. This is the kind of thing that Jane Jacobs, for example, who sometimes is dismissed as nostalgic or overly idealistic. I think that dismissiveness is incorrect, because she was about working on plans and involving communities. So I hope you will oppose this proposal, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you for testifying today. We appreciate it. That will conclude our in-person testimony. This panel's include, excuse? Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to testify? Please see one of the sergeants for a speaker's card. We will now transition to online testimony. The first group I will be calling from is Maria Ortiz, David Sloss, and Lydia Andre. That is Maria Ortiz, David Sloss, and Lydia Andre. The following group after that group will consist of Shante Bunch, Denise Lugo, Veronica Thaxton, and Leslie Sloan. We will begin first with Maria Ortiz. Maria, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin. Okay, we'll come back to Maria. David Sloss, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin. Okay, Maria, they're saying you're online, but you're not unmute. Maria Ortiz, please unmute. Okay, do we have Lydia? Lydia?
Yes.
Go ahead, Lydia.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Lydia, you can begin.
I'm Lydia Andre from the Chelsea's Neighbors Coalition and 300 West 20th Block Association. I want to add my voice against this proposal. Because here we are again, waiting for the crumbs to fall off the table while developers feast on our city. And let's be honest, developers are casting the kind of shadows most of us in the city don't want to live with. I'm always confused by the way this process works. I don't recall that Related is tasked with making the city a better place or creating more affordable housing, or creating a more equitable city with better community access to public spaces, or protecting our present resources of light and air in the High Line. Yet here they are in the driver's seat, deciding how much housing we can have, how our tax dollars are spent, or whether we have a casino foisted on us. How does that work? Do we not see what's in front of us? Related stands to reap enormous profits from gaming. Yet what is really going on here is a gaming of the system. One speaker claimed that the 2009 plan was no longer realistic. Realism isn't the problem, greed is. One speaker mentioned that no one gets 100% affordability. Yet should we be satisfied with 7%? Related is not the only game in town. This is an historic, once-in-a-lifetime development site and development opportunity. They can come back with a better plan, just like they tried to do on Friday. They can go back to the 2009 plan, which is a better plan. We absolutely can and must do better. Let's insist on it. City Council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak, but please do your job and stand up for us. We must honor our commitments to the community. We must build more affordable housing. We must maintain our public spaces and make sunlight and open air accessible. That is minable. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Ortiz, are you able to unmute? How about David Sloss?
Yep.
Please proceed.
Can you communicate? Yeah, so just very quickly, because all the points have been gone over here very eloquently and in a lot of detail. My name is David Sloss. I'm speaking on behalf of the 300 West 18th and 19th Streets Block Association. We and our members have a lot of concerns regarding the proposal. Ultimately, we are not against development in the area, obviously. And I just want to point out that the proposition by Related, that it's this version of the development, or we continue to live in the hellscape that they've fairly carefully chosen pictures of the current state of the neighborhood in, is disingenuous. There's obviously another way to do this, which will be more beneficial to the members of the community here. So we urge the Council to demand clear commitments on housing affordability and public subsidies before moving forward, and to vote no on this rezoning application. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Maria Ortiz, Maria Ortiz, if you can hear me, please unmute.
You may begin.
Okay, we don't have Maria, so we'll move on to the next group. The next panel will consist of Shante Bunch, Denise Lugo, Veronica Thaxton, and Leslie Sloan. Shante, you may begin, please unmute. Shante Bunch? If you can hear me, please unmute. Denise Lugo? Denise, if you can hear me, please unmute. Leslie Sloan?
Hello?
Yes, Leslie?
Can you hear me?
I'm sorry, who is this?
This is Veronica Thaxton.
Go ahead, Veronica.
Hello, good day to all of you, and thank you for this opportunity to virtually testify. My name is Veronica Thaxton, and I'm a lifelong New Yorker and a proud resident of Hudson Yards. In fact, I live in a Related Company's property. I stand before you today, not just as a supporter, but as someone who is also deeply connected to Hudson Yards and is invested in its future. As you are already aware, this project doesn't just bring buildings. It brings several and many opportunities. Besides the already documented benefits, I believe that this will be an incredible engine of support and an ecosystem for small businesses, culture, the arts, and the community at whole. All of the cited benefits will be a catalyst for creating thousands of well-paying jobs and will have the potential to provide many New Yorkers with a brighter future. Importantly, this new plan reflects the voices of our community. I respect that Related revised their proposal after more than 200 community meetings, replacing an office tower with more housing. That all matters. I'd say yes to this vision, because I believe that it will make Hudson Yards more vibrant, dynamic, and inclusive. I hope that you will also say yes. I am not in any way disrespectful to some of the opposition, but I do trust that things such as those currently underserved, housing affordability, increased wind and shadow impacts, plus other important concerns, can and will be resolved between our city and Related. Paraphrase what Councilmember Eric Botcher widely pointed out at the beginning of this hearing. We, as New Yorkers, are preparatory, yet towards at the same time. I interpret this to mean that while we feel deep pride and ownership over our neighborhoods, we also carry a shared responsibility to care for them.
Thank you for your testimony. Time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. Next, we hear from Leslie Sloan. Leslie, if you can hear me, please unmute. Leslie, if you can hear me, please unmute.
I'm here. I'm here. Thank you. I moved to New York City in 2002 and worked in the building that is now called Five Manhattan West, that sits between 31st and 33rd, between 9th and 10th. Back then, it was a harsh, brutalist building that straddled rail yards to its east and west. The neighborhood was deserted, and as a young woman, I was afraid to walk home alone at night. How many jobs were in those rail yards? How many restaurants and stores were there for my colleagues and I to go to dinner? The McDonald's on 34th and 10th? What Related has built in the first phase of Hudson Yards is a brand-new neighborhood within our city and a complete urban downtown where it could be dropped into any other American city. I brought my three kids to the Hudson Yards opening day festivities in March of 2019 and told them that they would tell their grandchildren they were present when this exciting new community was born. But I'm really here to speak to you as a Chelsea resident of over 20 years who owns a business. My company plans corporate and not-for-profit events, and Hudson Yards is a place my clients are eager to go and bring their attendees, welcoming people to a part of the city that was previously desolate. What the gorgeous spaces within Hudson Yards campus represent to my clients is the best of New York, opportunity, and promise on the literal horizon. That's tangible and doesn't exist in the same way anywhere else in our amazing city. Now we have the opportunity to add more benefits, more housing units, more green space, a school, a childcare center. Is this plan perfect? Probably not. But are shovels going into the ground tomorrow? Also no. Related will have to keep coming to these meetings and continuing to integrate the feedback of the community, the organizations in our community, as they've done to this point. We're not voting on a casino today. We're voting on progress. We are voting for an opportunity to add to and enhance the West Side. As a Chelsea resident for decades and someone who only wants progress that benefits our city until my children are old enough to speak at city council meetings, we need you to please vote yes on the rezoning plan.
Thank you. Denise Lugo? Denise Lugo?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, Denise.
Hello. My name is Denise. I'm 29 years old. I'm the second generation that's born and raised in New York City from both parents. I'm from all boroughs except for Staten Island. Now I live in Hell's Kitchen. I'm all for the Hudson Yards West project, as long as it's affordable with at most 30% of our income for rent. Due to the fact, majority of the hard-working and dedicated people within the city have the lowest-paying jobs and with prices constantly rising to pay for a living. This project should promote emotional intelligence with human interaction for tourists and residents of the city. This project should also better the mental health crisis within the city by allowing low-income workers to have a better living. Thank you for allowing me to speak and have a voice of love for New York City.
Thank you, Denise. Shante Bunch? Shante Bunch? Shante Bunch? Okay, we're going to call Maria Ortiz one more time. Maria Ortiz, if you can hear me, please unmute. Okay, the next group panel we're going to hear from consists of Reverend Dr. Johnny Green, Elizabeth Velez, Renee Keat, Rodney Harrison, and Ford Adams. We'll begin first with Reverend Dr. Johnny Green.
Good afternoon. I'm Reverend Dr. Johnny Green, pastor of Mount Ebo Baptist Church and mobilizing preachers and communities. IMPAC, Harlem-based, civil rights and faith-based organization. With hardships on the rise for so many New Yorkers, our city is in desperate need of opportunities to bring new housing, jobs, and economic benefits to those who need it the most. Our community needs jobs. With thousands of union jobs that many folk in our community could benefit from, the Hudson Yards West proposal provides an opportunity, despite what we've heard to date of those who oppose. The proposal also contains funds for workforce development training programs, ensuring local residents have a pathway to prosperity. I understand that what is before the council today is only zoning changes, which are needed for any development to happen on this site, the plan with the casino or the plan without. But I hope the city council does not stand in the way of progress. The complete Hudson Yards West proposal with a casino would not only provide an immediate economic boost with investments to directly help the community, including $1 billion in community benefits, that will also provide stability for our nonprofits on the front lines, helping to alleviate hunger, homelessness, and other issues. This is absolutely critical at a time when so many of our nonprofits face uncertain waters and faces unpredictability at the federal level. Plans also call for a new school, childcare facility, and much-needed housing. As a leader in my community, the choice is simple. Hudson Yards West represents a monumental opportunity. We must prioritize the needs of not only the haves but the have-nots, especially those in communities like mine. This project is bigger than any one of us. Hudson Yards West is about fostering hope, opportunity, and a stronger, more resilient New York, especially in the face of adversity. I implore you to support this project. Thank you so much.
Elizabeth Velez?
Good afternoon, members of the city council. My name is Elizabeth Velez, and I'm a business owner for a business that is established in Manhattan and does work in and around the area of the Hudson Yards. I am absolutely in support for the rezoning of the city council rezoning of the Hudson Yards, allowing them to move forward. New York City is the center of the world and is best known for iconic developments. The Hudson Yards West is emblematic of this. Not only equity, but also the great evolution of an underutilized, underserved area of New York City. New housing, green space, public schools, amenities, funding for the MTA, and great jobs, both in construction and permanent jobs, and opportunities of inclusion for diverse firms to build our great city. We have the opportunity now to continue to transform the skyline of Manhattan. Let's dream big and support the zoning change, which will benefit all New Yorkers. I support the city council to vote yes on this zoning change.
Renee Keat? Renee Keat?
I'm here. I'm just getting it up. Okay. My name is Renee Keat. I am the Resident Association President of the Elliott Chelsea Houses. Much has been made about the jobs this proposed casino would supposedly create, but when you look closer, that argument falls apart. The developers have already admitted that they plan to build over the rail yards with or without this casino. Construction jobs are already coming. We don't have to sell out our community for promises they were going to fulfill anyway. The reality is, the plans they are pushing do not reflect our community's real needs. It is an outrage. Hudson Yards is not inclusive. It is exclusive. It's a new neighborhood, but not built for the existing community, but for the tourists and the wealthy. And while the luxury towers up went, the residents have been left behind. Meanwhile, we've been paying their bills through tax breaks and public subsidies. And right now, we see how misplaced priorities are. The Manhattan Schoolhouse plays on our grounds of the Elliott Chelsea Houses, not in Hudson Yards. They benefit from our space while our resident needs continue to be ignored. Developers keep making empty promises. They are willing to throw in 4,000 more units just to sweeten the deal to win a casino license, not because they care about housing, but because they care about profit. When are we going to stop begging? When are we finally going to hold developers accountable? We don't need more fake affordable housing that no one here can actually afford. We need real, deeply affordable housing, public housing. We need parks, schools, cultural spaces, and investment in our community, not casinos and broken promises. For months, developers have been trying to exact consent from our communities, dangling promises to swimming pools, jobs, and schools. But their true priority has always been profit. Enough is enough. We urge the city council to vote no on this application. Stand with the people who live here, not the billionaires and the tourists they cater to. Thank you.
Rodney Harrison? Rodney Harrison, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, my name is Rodney Harrison, and I'm a resident of Manhattan. I'm here today because I want to see progress and growth in New York City. I support the Hudson Yards West project because I believe it'll benefit me economically as well as my family, and increase quality of life and improve our infrastructure. It'll benefit all of us throughout this community. And I'm a yes on this project, and I hope you all are too.
Thank you, Ford Adams.
Yeah, I support the casino for the job.
Okay, thank you, Ford.
I think this is a very good project and will help the community a lot, providing long-terms, long-lasting, good careers for people.
Okay, thank you, Ford. Maria Ortiz? Maria Ortiz?
Thank you. Oh, my God, finally, it's done. Ah, okay.
Maria Ortiz? Shante Bunch? Shante Bunch? Okay, do we have a James Duckett online?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, James.
Good afternoon. I'm the Reverend James Duckett, senior pastor of the Fort Ma Baptist Church in the Bronx, New York, and also a member of IMPAC New York Network. Hudson Yards West is a solution and example of the tremendous opportunities for good that can happen when the private, public, and nonprofit sectors work together with shared mutual goals. New Yorkers are struggling to pay rent, buy groceries, afford childcare, and overall, just build a sustainable life. At the same time, the potential for dramatic funding cuts at the federal level threatens to make the situation much worse for the working-class family. I believe that this project will create tens of thousands of permanent union jobs, jobs that will ensure New Yorkers can not only stay in New York, but have a pathway to success. And the workforce development training in the proposal will ensure residents can obtain the critical skills needed to harness this opportunity. I understand we are here today to discuss zoning for this development. The process for the casino is totally separate and should be. The state will evaluate which proposals create the most benefit for New York. But from what I've seen, the plan with the Wind Resort, which creates $1 billion in community benefits over the next 10 years, is unprecedented. And in a time when nonprofits don't know whether they can keep their doors open with everything going on in Washington, we need private investment, funding for food banks, after-school programs, job training, and so much more. And then there's the housing aspect. New housing units will go a long way in stemming the outflow of New Yorkers being forced out due to increased rent.
Thank you for your testimony. Time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. We're going to stand at ease. If there is anybody else online, online, please raise your hand, and we will call you. Can I have Justin Thompson? Kelly, Kevin? Lala? And William Fraser? If you guys are online, please unmute. Start with Justin Thompson. Justin Thompson? Kelly, are you there? Kevin?
Hi, uh, my name is Kevin Carmichael, and I just want to say that I am in support of the project for the housing and the public parks that it may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Leila? Leila? William Fraser? William Fraser?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, how are you, sir?
How are you?
Good, thank you. I am for the Hudson Yards West project for the reasons for thousands of new jobs, economic growth, a continuance of amazing things happening in the Hudson Yards. I just think this will add more to it. And at the end of the day, there's going to be a casino in New York City anyway sooner or later. Why not let Wind Projects do it because they do it right? And it will create thousands and thousands of jobs. And at a time what we're going through in New York City right now, this can only be a boost for all of us. And by the way, I'm a small-business owner, a native New Yorker, and my business is in Chelsea, New York. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Shemaine? Shemaine?
Can you guys see?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Well, first of all, thank you. Shemaine Locano, I approve this project. I feel like it'll be great for Chelsea. It'll bring plenty of jobs, affordable housing, parks. Again, some biases between the nonprofit, the private, the public sector. And I'm a business owner here in Chelsea myself and a native New Yorker, and it's just the expansion of... And there's going to be a casino in New York, so why not Hudson Yards?
End of meeting now. Leave.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shemaine. David Warren? David Warren? David Warren? Okay, we have a few iPhone users online. If you're online, please unmute. State your name, and you may begin.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi. Okay, thank you so much. I'm always at the end of these meetings. Thank you to the committee and council member Eric Botcher, who represents my district. I'm a born and raised New Yorker, lived in Chelsea for the past 15 years and past eight years.
Can you please state your name? Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Julie Hatterer. Dr. Julie Hatterer.
Thank you. You can begin.
Okay. Anyway, so thank you for taking, for letting me talk at the end of all this. But anyway, I've lived in my current location on 23rd and 10th for the past eight years. I'm a retired psychiatrist and recently have been volunteering as a horticulture partner, a volunteer gardener on the High Line, which I've been involved with since its inception. I love the High Line. And you know who else loves the High Line? As we've already said, everyone. Everyone in the world loves the High Line. I was in London and was in Washington, DC this weekend. And when I say work on the High Line, they say, oh, that's so cool. I love the High Line. So that gets me to the question, is why you would vote on a zoning proposal that will take away the beauty and character of the High Line? This is the third or fourth meeting I've been at and I've spoken at, usually at the end. I'm not a zoning expert, but I do know about mental health. And before I talk about that, I just want to say to all these people, I support unions, I support development. But just think, if Related had done what they promised to do in 2009, how many businesses would have been created? How much construction work would have been done? So this, you know, last minute because they finally got the financing, think they'll get the financing from Wind. That's the reason they're doing this now, not... I mean, they've had 16 years to, you know, make jobs, build, you know, construction, and they haven't done it, but now they think they can with the casino. Anyway, I'm a psychiatrist. I can talk about mental health. What's good for mental health? Green, light, air, open spaces, community spirit. What's bad for mental health? Darkness, tall buildings, encroaching space... Darkness, tall buildings, encroaching spaces, wind tunnels, and more importantly, casinos and gambling near schools, which is crazy. Finally, the feeling, what's very important to the community is the feeling that we are heard by our council people. We are fighting throughout this country, large developments and corporations, which are taking over the will of the people. And I, you know, this is, how long are we going to keep doing this?
Thank you for your testimony. Time has expired.
Okay. Please go.
Thank you for your testimony. Next we'll hear from, is Emily or Leila? Emily or Leila? Emily or Leila, please unmute? Emily or Leila? Okay. If you are iPhone user, please use the raise hand function or press star six to unmute yourself, and you could testify. Just please reinstate your name. Do we have anyone else online ready to testify? Okay, we're going to transition to in-person testimony. I will call on Christopher Leon John.
Hello, chairs. Riley and Botcher, my name is Christopher Leon Johnson. I'm here to show opposition to the High Line project. I am a former members of the Dursby J. I used to work at the MTA East of Access as a shop steward from 2017 to 2021. And I want to explain my reason why as a Dursby J shop steward, former shop steward is the reason why this is a bad idea for any community. First off, the zoning, the zoning application is really off. You want to take out a whole High Line, which is a prestigious institution, and put a little crappy little casino, and everybody know the casino is going to attract the worst type of people you ever have attract into any institution, which is going to lower the land values in your district, Mr. Botcher. He knows it's going to lower your land value. It would never raise the land values. I'm, to be on the record, I'm for the casino bid in Brooklyn for Coney Island because it's going to benefit Brooklyn. Manhattan already has enough land use application to be approved. Queens already have enough. The Bronx, forget the Bronx. Staten Island, nobody cares. But I'm calling on the city council to reject this land use application, and if you, this land use application, because this is a bad land use application, this is not going to benefit the community at all. Most of the people that are supporting this stuff are getting paid, especially my union Dursby J and HTC, they're getting paid by the developers and Related to push this project. This is not going to benefit nobody. Yeah, all they say is going to, it's going to create jobs in Manhattan, but there's already enough jobs in Manhattan. There's already enough jobs. The members are going to get paid from like, what, $17 an hour to about $35 an hour, and that's, that's if they can even see $35 an hour, and that's not, these are not even living ways in New York City. And the thing about it, these unions are really corrupt. As a Dursby J shop steward that used to work and do political activity for you, Riley, Mr. Riley, that helped got you elected as a, as a, as a shop steward behind the scenes and some people, powers, I can tell you right now, these two unions, HTC and Dursby J, are really corrupt. They getting paid by, they getting paid on the table by these developers to push this project, and, and it's not going to benefit the community, it would never benefit the community members, it would never benefit the people around us.
Time expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're excused.
All right, thank you.
We're going to transition back online. We're going to stand at ease. If there are any members of the public who is to testify regarding this proposal remotely, please press the raise hand button now. If you are in person, please identify yourself to one of the sergeants. Thank you. If we have anybody online or in person, please identify yourself. If you're online, please press the raise hand function. If you're in person, please see one of the sergeants. We will stand at ease for the next 30 seconds. Okay. There being no other members of the public who is to testify on LU's 283 to 286 related to the Western Rail Yard modification proposal. The public hearing is now closed, and the items are laid over. We were also scheduled to vote today on 102-51, Queens Boulevard, LU's 269 and 270. These items are being laid over. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, subcommittee counsel, land use, and other council staff, and the sergeant-at-arms participating in today's meeting. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.